Thank you. This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everybody, [S01] and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is Thursday, September 22, 2022, and the time is now 6:03 PM. Just a brief reminder before we proceed with the meeting, our rules of civility and decorum. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of rudeness or personal attacks are strictly prohibited, and any disruptive behavior from the audience are likewise strictly prohibited. So please govern yourselves accordingly. We're going to proceed first with roll call from the city clerk, followed by the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Maile, city clerk?
Mayor Penserga.
I hear.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Bob Bender of Christ Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Mayor Angela Cruz. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the leadership that you have given to us and our city. We pray that you would give wisdom and discernment and that your blessing would be upon this time. As many things are covered, as budgets are looked at, that we would be good stewards of all of the resources and of this community. And most of all, Heavenly Father, I pray that you would help us to love like you love, that we would be full of grace and kindness to one another, and that Boynton Beach would be known as a community of kindness and of love and of purpose. And may you give us the wisdom and discernment to know what to do next so we're best positioned for the future. I pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are now moving on to agenda approval. Additions, deletions, and corrections. I'd like to begin. I received a request from our staff to remove item 7C. So that is again, 7C is removed from the agenda. Regarding item 3B, which is a proclamation for Constitution Week, that proclamation has already been provided. The receiver of that proclamation could not be present today, but they were able to meet with me yesterday. So I'd like to ask that we remove 3B. I was also informed that we have a request to add, let's call it 3C, Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, and that will be done by Vice Mayor Cruz. And that is it for me. All right. Commissioner Kelly, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to, under new business, I would like to add an item to discuss the zoning and the future use of the city-owned property within the Meadows.
Excellent. Zoning and future use of the Meadows.
Correct.
All right. All right. And that's it, Commissioner?
Yes.
All right. Let's go to Vice Mayor Cruz.
Nothing to add at this time.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Hay?
Nothing to add at this time.
And of course, Commissioner Turkin, who is joining us virtually this evening.
Nope. Commissioner Kelly had added what I wanted to. But I do have a question. How do we, what is the process to propose a proclamation?
Right now, usually proclamation requests are submitted to the city clerk, and that is the process, as I understand it to be, which then goes to the city manager's office.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. And Commissioner Turkin, I'm glad you brought that up because one of the items for this evening is this proposed local rules of how we run our meetings. And one of those topics will be proclamation. So I'm glad you started that conversation.
Great.
Is there any other deletions, additions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve amended.
All right. So I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz and a second from Commissioner Turkin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the agenda is amended. Let's begin with informational items by members of the city commission. Commissioner Kelly, would you like to begin?
I don't have any disclosures. I do, I did attend the 9/11 ceremony at Veterans Park. And I'm thank you to staff for organizing that. I think that every year it is important that we look back and we remember that day and just how impactful it was in both, in both a negative way, but also in a positive way. So that's my input. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turkin?
Negative, I have none.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
No disclosures on current agenda items, but I did meet with our school board member, Erica Whitfield, and we had a great conversation and discussion on how to improve our schools in Boynton Beach. Thank you.
And Board, Commissioner Hay?
No, no disclosures at this time.
All right. As for myself, I also attended the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony event. I want to thank everybody who organized that. It was a beautiful event, and it's always a beautiful event. So thank you to all of you who put that together. I also attended yesterday the community meeting at the Meadows. It was very well-attended, so I want to thank the community for organizing that as well as their hard work. Also, I want to just take a moment, and I want to make this a habit, to just recognize some of the great work that our city staff is doing. On so many occasions, they are not recognized. They're working behind the scenes. And I think the city should know what they're doing. So I'll give one example this evening. I want to especially recognize Mr. Tremaine Johnson and the utilities staff and all of their teammates and supervisors. Recently, they worked on a staff-initiated project to improve the stormwater project in Lake Boynton Estates. And I also want to acknowledge Eric Rucker and Reggie Jonas for putting together the plans for flood mitigation, and eventually that turned into a reality. And this was a collaboration between the Stormwater Division and Pumping Stations electricians. And so this will help with flood mitigation for that community in the long run. So thank you for the hard work. Thank you to our Utilities Director. I see you in the audience. I saw the pictures, and I want the community to know that our staff is excellent and they are working diligently and professionally. So thank you. So that is it for informational items from me. And we're going to move on to item 2B, Conduct Second Public Budget Hearing for Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Final Millage and Tentative Annual Operating Budget. There are two resolutions associated with this hearing, Resolution Number R22-126, to adopt the final millage rate for the general fund for fiscal year 2022 and 2023, as well as Proposed Resolution Number R22-127, which is to adopt the final budget for the general fund and all other funds for the fiscal year, also 2223. I'd like to begin by first asking our Director of Finance, Mara Friedrichsen, if you'd like to just give a brief overview of the item. Then we'll proceed to public comments and discussion amongst the commission and voting. Thank you, Ms. Friedrichsen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Mara Friedrichsen, Director of Financial Services. There are no changes from the first reading two weeks ago, but we did want to highlight that the proposed ad valorem tax rate is 7.85, which is a decrease from the 7.89 mils last year. We did experience a 12.95% increase for the taxes over the rollback rate of 6.95, and that was due to mainly the operational costs, contractual obligations, and payroll for city staff.
All right, excellent. And while we have you in the podium, are there any members of the commission have any questions for Ms. Friedrichsen while she's here? All right, hearing none. We're going to proceed to public comment on these two items. Again, this is the resolution for the military rate and adopting the final budget. So if you would like to speak on these two items, and if you are in the chambers, please approach the podium. So we have two of them. As always, it's three minutes per person. After the in-person group has spoken, we'll proceed to online. And we do have a few items that have been submitted to us, which we will read for the record. All right. So now is the time to approach the podium if you would like to speak specifically in the military rate and on the budget. All right.
Cindy Falco de Carrato, I would like it be broken down to plain English what these resolutions actually entail. And also, I do want to make a statement that, again, taxes are voluntary. That's why we had the Tea Party, and it is unconstitutional. But in regard to this, I would like this really broken down so we all comprehend in fullness what this resolution entails. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment speakers specifically on the military rate and the final budget?
Hi, Ernest Magnoli. So tonight I brought my passport, my Florida driver's license with my legal name and address on it, my birth certificate. And I'd like to say, I'm proud to say that at least I know who's in this meeting. I wish everybody else would show up with this kind of stuff. So about the rate, I got my taxes already for next year. I usually get them at the end of the year, and then I pay them before December for next tax year. I pay them ahead of time. So already, the thing for the canals on there, the thing for the, my taxes went up over $500. So I find it interesting, you know, that you have these meetings and you talk, you know, oh, we want to help the average person and the seniors and, and yet, no matter what, we got our tax bill. All this conversation you hear here, all the voting, it doesn't matter. It's on the, for homeowners, condo owners, it's on the bill already. It's on the tax bill. So there it is, you know? You make it sound like, oh, everything is optional, and we're going to drop this rate and drop that rate so the taxes go down and that. Okay, so 120 bucks for the canal is on there, $500 plus increase in taxes. I only have a two-bedroom condo, you know? And so the taxes go from 37, 3,700 a year to 4,400 a year. That's a big increase. And, you know, every time we're at these meetings, you make it sound like, oh, you know, we care about the people on fixed income. I'm on fixed income. And, and no matter what you say here, no matter what goes on at the meetings, you always make it sound like, oh, you know, we're going to keep it down, and taxes are going down. And I think you got two people up here, maybe one that owns a house in Boynton Beach. But the rest of the people, you know, you don't, you don't seem to get it. And you just keep making it sound to everybody that, oh, you know, taxes are going to go down, and we're going to make sure that the homeowner, the condo owner, doesn't have to pay for all these part-time billionaires that live here that you seem to be just building, building, building for. And then we have to pay for the services. We have to pay for their tax abatements. We have to pay for their flooding and all the damage they do. And you can't stop it. That's my comment. You like my comment? No comment?
All right. Any other public comment speakers on these two items that are in the chamber? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, we're going to move on to any comments online. Who's, I don't know who's back there. Is it Charles or money? Do we have any digital hands raised?
This is Manny. We have one digital hand raised. That is Rebecca Harvey. Rebecca, you're, you've been on YouTube, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name to speak.
Ms. Harvey? All right, going once, going twice, going three times?
The digital hand has been lowered.
All right.
We currently have no hands raised, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Manny. We're going to move on to reading some items that were submitted to us. Therefore, see? All right. So we have concluded public comments on these two resolutions. So now it's time to bring the discussion to the commission and also for final voting. Commissioner Hay or any of my colleagues, do you have any comments on these resolutions? Or do we proceed? Ready to proceed? Ready to proceed?
Motion to approve the miller rate of 7.85.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. And to be clear, this is Resolution R22-126. We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution Number R22-127, may I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
From Commissioner Kelly. We have a second from Commissioner Turkin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item 2C, Proposed Resolution Number R22-116. This item was previously tabled. So first, I'd like to ask for a motion to remove from the table.
So moved.
All right, I heard a motion from Commissioner Hay, a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of removing this item from the table say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the item has been removed from the table. This resolution reads, Adopt the annual canal services special assessment rate for fiscal year 2223 per the preliminary assessment resolution R22-098, pursuant to the provisions of ordinance number 21-011, Sections 166.021 and 166.041, Florida statutes and other applicable provisions and law. All right.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
Yep, I would like to get the follow-up from city attorney, city staff. And then I do see Mr. Fishman and others in the audience, and I would like to ask for public comment on this again, please.
Of course. Can we update city manager and city attorney on the outcome of your research?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, I'll go ahead and start. Since the last meeting, staff has worked diligently, Assistant City Manager Andrew Mack, I know, for example, and the Utilities Department to contact various different entities that have been discussed at the last meeting to confirm their positions on maintaining the, these canals. And their positions are the same as it has been, that they are not responsible. Either county or Florida Wildlife Conservation is not responsible for maintaining these canals. And so I don't know if Mr. Mack wants to add any specifics to that, but I know we spoke several times with, Mr. Mack spoke several times, Mr. Fishman. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Fishman late yesterday. And I know he's continuing to work on his own with some of these agencies. But as of today or as of yesterday, the facts are the same as they were before and has this been before, before the commission, that either FWC or Palmage County feels they're responsible in these canals and that the proposal for you this evening is to continue with the special assessment so that the canals can be sprayed and maintained. And while in the meantime, efforts can continue to be made to look at other solutions to this issue, do other entities take in work or doing other projects in the area? But Mr. Mack, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager, Public Services. That is correct. We spoke to the county. We spoke to a Mr. Good at the county. He did confirm that the FWC, that these canals are not eligible. And we did get that in writing from the county as well as FWC. They did, according to their criteria, that's a part of their state, the rules. So we did confirm that with them. Mr. Fishman did reach out to additional people in the FWC to see if he could get an appeal or some type of override. So he's still going to work through that as we go forward.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Mr. Mack. I do have a question for you, and I think it might be for you, Mr. Mack. So thank you for doing your additional homework, your research into the matter. What about long-term solutions? Because as we discussed before, you know, this needs to be addressed short term and long term. Are we working on a longer, long-term plan for improving the health of these canals?
Right now, we're, as a part of the grant that we applied for, for Stormwater Master Plan, we will be doing a stormwater study within that Chapel Hill area. So when we look at that, we'll make improvements based on the overall area. So we are looking that. We're also looking at potentially the cost would be to improve culvert so that we can make some better informed decisions. Those are all things that we're working towards going in the future, yes.
All right, that's wonderful to hear. Any other comments or questions for my colleagues?
Yes, I think, I think one of the things that we discuss, and I know I've discussed with Mr. Fishman, is that is this canal private or public? One thing that, you know, I want to ensure is that we do take the steps necessary to treat this canal and then identify, you know, if that canal is private or public, if the city can take care of it, or if we need to continue with the assessment. I do want to make sure that canal is treated.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we can all agree with that for sure. I would also now like to move on to public comment on this item, beginning with those in person. So if you would like to speak on this item, now is the time to approach the podium. Then we'll proceed to those online and any items for the record that we need to read.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
It's nice to be here once again, and we have had discussions. And I do believe we're coming.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Gary L. Fishman. I've lived here for 31 years at 3504 Diane Drive in Boynton Beach. I guess I got carried away because this is, I hope, a conclusion moving towards, and I appreciate everyone's help, and thank you. To all Boynton Beach city officials, our canal in culvert is being discussed. First, the canal. I am the, I am working diligently and energetically approaching Florida Fish and Wildlife, FWC, and now something new, the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP. In order to get proper classification for our canal, the Lake Ida Canal between South Lake Drive and Diane Drive, the proper evidence points to that it's public, not private. It's a work in progress. You'll be officially notified soon. The research is incredibly complex, but an answer will be found soon. The assessment will allow our canal to have the necessary treatment spraying. So we are in favor, obviously, of getting the canal sprayed. I've been told the billing won't go out until November or after. So there is time for my research, and thank you. The culvert has been determined to be too small, too low in the city of Boynton Beach. In due diligence, when they assigned the canal this culvert, unfortunately, the culvert was only designed to have water pass through it, not the weeds and not the debris. The canal is too large, connected to Lake Ida both loaded with weeds. The culvert was installed by Boynton Beach. Boynton Beach should and will take the responsibility for this culvert that's not working. We've been assured that tomorrow and thereafter, the city will be exploring an alternative. Budgeting, engineering, and explorations will be done immediately by the city. We, we would like monthly updates starting November 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, and thereafter, please. We have been told a year, two year, and a half, this project will be completed. We have waited such a very, very long time since Kurt Bresner, many, many years ago, and Laurie La Verriere, and the fine people up here on the dais, and Thomas Turkin on the viewer. So we're hoping that the city can work with us spraying the canal. We'll find out if it's private or not. And please let us come together to make a healthier canal in culvert. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I really feel that we can come up with a solution.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? This is the canal assessment, specifically on the canal assessment.
Hi, Ernest George Magnoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, condo 407, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. I'd like to say my phone number, too. 561-788-3888. And my email is E R N M I G N O L I at gmail dot com. And I'm going to show up every time with passport, Florida driver's license, and birth certificate. So anyone listening knows who I am. And so again, about the canal, I, I keep, I live on the, on the intercoastal. And I live on a very, very problematic canal myself. As a matter of fact, I live on the canal where you're going to take all the development on Boynton Beach that you've increased with all the high rises and all the polluting and the flooding that's in the street from all the diesel trucks. You're, you're building a pipe that's going to go, come out about 200 feet from my terrace. So that's something I have to look forward to in order to compensate for all the things you keep approving on the west of 95 and from 95 east. You're now draining it because you can't control the flooding and all the pollution, and you keep approving warehouses for diesel trucks. So everything that lands on the street is polluted. And what you're doing now is you're, you're using city money and federal money to try and compensate for what maybe you shouldn't have approved in the first place. So what's going to happen is you're going to keep filling up these canals, polluting them, and then you're going to keep denying who is responsible because you're the one who's approving this. And then with the development of the canals, with the people, with the mansions and the million-dollar condos, of course, they want to have boat slips. So they're going ahead most of the time and putting in slips and marinas and things that really don't have federal approval. And that's causing the mud to build up, and, and that's causing endless flooding when we have king tide and now year-round because you keep adding the high rises. There's no proper drainage. And then you're going to keep assessing the middle and, and lower-valued homes like mine to pay for what all these billionaire, million-dollar things that you're building. And they're, you know, 300-foot yachts that they want to have boat slips for, and they don't want to maintain the property. So the rest of us have to foot the bill. And no matter what you do and what you say, it just keeps coming back to the average person, condo owner and homeowner. Can I get an extra two minutes?
No. We're going to move online. Money, how many people have their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right. I was informed that we have some items to read into the record. Mr. Stables?
Yes, we have three items to read in. The first is from Yannick D. Fabrique. Pursuant to my prior communication dated September 8, I feel compelled to reiterate the concerns I have regarding the culvert that separates South Lake and Diane Drives, which ultimately serves as a public right of way. This letter also serves as continued concern regarding the magnitude of the issue that hasn't, hasn't been resolved over countless discussions in a 44-year period. As I stated before, expert engineers have deemed the current culvert as inefficient for two reasons. A, it lacks water and debris flow for the current demands of the canal's needs. B, it has no secondary or backup escape should the primary be deemed inoperable, which is common throughout the year. Therefore, collecting the unsanitary debris that could cause health issues to children and adults alike. Let's begin with why this happens. Lake Ida serves as a focal amenity for the community. And while this lake is widely used for numerous sporting activities, it also serves as the runoff for Lake Okeechobee. In some instances, this is good news as it serves as the primary water source for our community lake. But in other predominant instances, it also serves as the proverbial catch-all as well. When I state this, it is widely known, although not publicly stated, that a large sum of the trash that flows from Lake Okeechobee flows into Lake Ida. The aforementioned statement would normally not be an issue within the community if there was an escape for the trash to flow in and out of, but it is where our problem lies. The 42-inch culvert that we continue to debate over has and continues to serve as the catch-all. And with all intent and purpose, when trash collects in a particular area for long periods of time, it creates an unsafe and unsanitary environment. God forbid, should someone get sick and be able to prove their illness from this canal. This could result in a public relations nightmare. My solution stands firm on my prior communication. Rather than continue to debate over who is responsible for expanding this initiative into a bridge, we should spend more time working through a process of moving this initiative along. A bridge will resolve all of the aforementioned issues. And while we, as residents, know there will be disruption during the construction phase, we also know that this is the ultimate solution to clean up the continued health issues in our community. I look forward to a favorable and amicable result in the very near future. Sincerely, Yannick D. Fabrique. You're still very concerned resident and constituent on South Lake Drive. And this one is from William Cunningham III. Hello to all the decision-makers of Boynton Beach. My name is William A. Cunningham III, and I greatly appreciate you all and everything you do for our city.[1779.52] I know this subject is not easy for any of us and very confusing, and nobody has an answer to rectify the situation at hand, but we are all working together to find a solution. I apologize I could not be in attendance due to a previous commitment in Malibu. Here are my thoughts, though. The canal that is located behind our homes is not a private canal, and the culvert at 42 inches in diameter is way too small and was designed to carry water, not weeds and debris. All lakes and canals have weeds and debris. It's a part of their makeup, and what is crucial for the cleanliness of the water is to keep the water flowing properly and to always improve the flow of water as well as spray the canals necessary. We all know that stagnant water is not good for the people or surrounding area, and spraying our waters constantly isn't good for the environment. I'm also hearing that the canal is our property, and there is consideration of making the homeowners pay for the spraying maintenance of the canal. And I feel if this is our, considered our property, I feel it is only right that no one should be able to trespass and have access to it. And if they do want to have water runoff into it from I-95, fish it, kayak it, or navigate through it, they should be charged a fee to do so. I grew up on this canal, and I know that many people that do not live on this canal enjoy fishing it and kayaking it from not only our city, but many others. Let's continue to work together to find a solution, please. Affably yours, William A. Cunningham III. The final letter is from Nancy and Joe Barbalaco, Barbalaco. To the city of Boynton Beach, our name, our namesake, Joe and Nancy Barbalaco, and we have lived at 3508 Diane Drive since 1989. The majority of the problems we are having, having are the small 42-inch culvert that is only designed to have water pass through it. As per the conversations with the city, the culvert is not designed to have weeds or debris to pass through it. This tiny sunken culvert is at the north end of a long, wide canal that is at the opposite end of a big lake with a big, wide bridge opening with lots and lots of weeds and debris that flow through. Lakes and canals, part of their existence, is to have weeds that need to have easy access to flow, and currently, they do not. The city wrongly closed in the canal by installing an improper culvert back in the late 70s. This canal is not private and probably, and probably public. The assessments given to this canal are unfair as it is the Lake Ida Canal. The other canals are a lot smaller, not as navigable, have no faulty culvert, and are not part of the necessary flow of Lake Ida. The city of Boynton Beach has put us in this position and therefore needs to take responsibility. Boynton Beach and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission need to spray and haul off the weeds, and the improper culvert needs to be replaced. We look forward to the city helping us. Thank you very much, Nancy and Joe Barbalaco. And that is all.
Thank you. That is the conclusion of public comments. We have heard from staff. We have heard from the public. Commissioners, if there's nothing else, may I have a motion to approve Resolution R-22-116?
I do have something. So I just want to ask staff for that requested monthly update. You can, you can correspond with me with that, and I will correspond with Mr. Fishman to get that going. And then I do look forward to the study in Chapel Hill, the stormwater study, and see what comes about that so we can try to address this underlying issue. And thank you, city clerk and city manager, for addressing those constituents' messages as well. I appreciate that. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Turkin, and we have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
The ayes have it, and the motion passes four to one with Vice Mayor Cruz dissenting. All right. So that concludes item 2C. We are now moving on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. Item A is to proclaim the month of September as Deaf Awareness Month. This proclamation will be accepted by Lance Fisher, President of South Florida Deaf Senior Citizens, Inc. I'd like to read the proclamation now. Where September is Deaf Awareness Month in the United States, a celebration dedicated to increasing public awareness of deaf culture and deaf issues, as well as recognizing the heritage and language unique to the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Whereas deaf people are highly diverse population with a wide range of communication preferences and cultural and ethnic backgrounds that shape their interactions with their environment. Whereas deaf people do not feel that they are disabled in any way, deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals are just as capable as hearing individuals. There is a difference in the way those that are deaf and hard-of-hearing communicate, but it is not a handicap or disability. Whereas recognizing Deaf Awareness Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural history of the deaf community and continue to work, the work, of advocating for the rights of deaf people everywhere. Whereas we believe Boynton Beach is deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing, and late deafened individuals should have the same access to many benefits and opportunities available to live, work, play, and communicate in the city. Now, therefore, I, Tye Pinserga, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Deaf Awareness Month. Thank you. And is Mr. Fisher here? Excellent. All right.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. Is everyone ready? I'm honored to receive the proclamation on behalf of deaf residents living in the city of Boynton Beach and beyond from Mayor Pinserga and the commissioners as well. Thank you. The Deaf Awareness Month is important to all deaf and hard-of-hearing community living in Boynton Beach, Palm Beach County, the state of Florida, and the United States of America, and everywhere because it brings awareness to the social isolation that the deaf and hard-of-hearing people face every day. We are not physically disabled. We don't have the ability to hear, is all, and that affects our ability to communicate clearly with the general population. Ways that hearing people can support Deaf Awareness Month, some ideas, are always face the person when talking or speaking with a deaf individual. Speak clearly, slowly, and steadily. Do not cover your mouth. A person may not be able to read your lips. Repeat and rephrase if necessary, especially if understanding does not happen. You can write notes while communicating, and if possible, you can use an American Sign Language interpreter. We hate it when hearing people, after not being successful with communication, say, "Never mind. We don't want to understand. We want to understand each other." Now, let me tell you a short story about my life while growing up as a deaf child. This is before the American with Disabilities Act was implemented. So the telephone was 100% useless. I had to ask my mother, my sister, my friend, my teacher, and someone who can hear to make phone calls for me. So that wasn't the easiest. Today, it's very different. We have video relay interpreters, the use of interpreters. We have texting, FaceTime. We have a plethora of technological, technological devices, which makes it easier for the deaf and hard-of-hearing to communicate. Secondly, TV shows had no closed captions at all. I had to ask my mother to tell me, you know, what was, what's being talked about. I always felt like I was bothering her. I always had to ask what was going on. The same thing while going to the movies. I didn't know what was being talked about in the movie. But today, TV shows, they have closed captions, and many movie theaters provide closed captionings as well. So it's a huge improvement in that arena. The third, as the responsibility of a deaf child to learn how to communicate with my relatives, I felt like it was my responsibility. You know, I was ignored most of the time within family settings. Today, it's the other way around. With the encouragement of hearing, relatives are more motivated to learn American Sign Language. So there's a reversal happening. So in school, I was punished. I used to get hit. I used to get disciplined a lot. So it's very different now. There's more acceptance. Back in the day, it was like, oh, you had to only hear in order to communicate, but American Sign Language is visual. A fourth difference is back then, there was no interpreters. So if I went for a job interview or a meeting or in other things, I was stuck with no interpreter. It was a hard time to communicate. Even today, having the interpreter here is a huge asset. But the problem is that it's not 100% solved. You know, we have interpreters. We, we have things. Sometimes interpreters make mistakes, so it's not 100% bulletproof, but there are improvements. Well, anyways, Deaf Awareness Program and the ADA has made our lives much better. It's not perfect. And for example, so you know when you go into a waiting room, like a doctor's office or an automobile repair facility, or you're in a waiting room, you see a television displayed? Sometimes when they have closed captions, that's great, but some people say, you know, "Bothers me." So the staff or the person working will shut the closed captions off. And sometimes a deaf person, you know, had to grow up. It's like being deaf is like watching TV with no sound. So without closed captions or sound, we can't understand. We need the, we need the closed captions for understanding. I'm going to be wrapping up soon. I just want to, we can't. The American with Disabilities Act. We can't accept legal. The ADA hasn't always been there, so we, we want to keep these protections in place. So for example, in the state of Florida, there was a lot of cutbacks of rights. Now they're talking about, you know, prohibiting same-sex marriages is one example of this. We're afraid the ADA will be next, you know? What if they cut or eliminate the ADA? It's a huge concern for our community. So we want to vote for the right people to keep the ADA active. On behalf of South Florida senior citizens, I want to say thank you for the proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your heartfelt words. The next item is a proclamation from Vice Mayor Cruz. Vice Mayor? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This proclamation is for Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Americans represent a wide range of nationalities and backgrounds, coming from diverse locations, including Central America, South America, the Caribbean, and Spain. And Hispanics of every race, class, and multiple nationalities have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Palm Beach County. Hispanics continue to enrich our nation's character, shape our common future, and affirm the narrative of American unity and progress. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate Hispanic culture, honor the invaluable ways Hispanics contribute to our common goals, and work toward a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. Whereas in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the Hispanic culture, honor the contributions Hispanics have made in the city of Boynton Beach, and we highlight an important part of the diversity that keeps our community strong. Now, therefore, be a result that I, Angela Cruz, Vice Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th in the city of Boynton Beach as Hispanic Heritage Month. And we have Alejandra Garrido from the Hispanic Vote with her family to accept this proclamation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are now going to proceed to the next portion of the agenda, which is public audience. Again, this is limited to three minutes per individual. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium now. We'll begin with in-person, followed by online. And we do have two podiums, so please just form a line, and we'll go back and forth between the two sides.
Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm not sure if you all are aware, Shirley Casa, longtime resident, longtime real estate agent, was like the top seller in Leiserville in the Million Dollar Club. She passed away yesterday. I know. We all love Shirley. She had moved recently to Snug Harbor. She's been active and involved in this city for decades. I know so many people know who she is, and, and this was, I was at work at Coldwell Banker this morning when we got the call from her family. And so I thought I would share because I know so many of you know her, have worked with her, you know, had something to do with her over the decades. And she was quite the force for good in our city, and this is a tremendous loss, but I wanted you all to be aware. I don't know what's going to happen. She has been in Massachusetts with family, and, you know, we, we don't know much, but I wanted everyone to be aware. So sad news, but, you know, it happens unfortunately. And, you know, of course, our condolences to the family because she was a great woman who made a tremendous difference in our city. Thank you.
Cindy Falca de Carrado. I have a couple of statements I'd like to make. I see that I never got the heterosexual month for September, which I truly feel left out of, and I believe the whole heterosexual community also feels left out of. This is an injustice to us. I also thought tonight we were doing a proclamation for September 17 to the 23rd for the Constitution Week, which is something that should have been tonight because I think it's fabulous. Plus, I was born on September 17th, and I am a constitutionalist. I would also like to make a statement in regards to, even though I'm very thankful for the Hispanic, I've never seen an American month. I've never seen when we, as an American people, have a month to celebrate being our heritage as Americans coming to this land, standing for its freedoms, and fighting for its freedoms. I would like to see that as well. I would also like to make mention in regards to our reclaimed water, what that actually means, and the assessments that are being made by our Solid Waste Authority. I'm being charged $184 assessment on top of what I pay for the county and the city taxes, which is over $1,000. Just for the you that don't know what reclaimed water is, it's the water you flush down your toilet when you defecate and when you urinate. You are now having that water put back into your yard, and who knows if it's not in your drinking water. You need to be aware of these terminologies. They use cute words that we don't catch right away because it sounds, "Oh, reclaim. That's wonderful. We are saving dollars. We're reusing something." Well, that's what they're reusing, which could be going into your bodies, making you sick. I just want you to know that. Also, when did we change our meetings to Tuesday? I mean, pardon me, to Thursdays? They were always the first and third Tuesday. I'd like to know when that transpired. I did not know nor aware of it, and I'd like to go back to that. That's what it's supposed to be. I've actually scheduled my life around that so I can make sure that I'm here to speak on these issues. I also wanted to inquire about, if you're going to share something or teach something, then I would appreciate if we walk in that. If we want respect, we've got to give respect. And what I've noticed, and I'm not pointing And what I've noticed, and I'm not pointing fingers, but I am making a statement, because it really bothers my spirit when we're here as a people to speak on our grievances or to share things that are transpiring, and people are getting yelled at from the dais out to the audience. That's just not the way it should be. If we're gonna have communication, then we all need to take maybe some communication skills on the dais to learn how to communicate with differences and when people are not behaving the way you think that they should. And last time I checked, free speech is our First Amendment, which is the supreme law of the land. I also, I shared with you about the reclaim and about the no taxation, which is also a violation. And I would really like to know why my bill that I'm paying extra assessments for garbage services, when that comes out of my utilities, which I pay, I don't know why I'm being charged, seriously, $184 extra. I'm still being charged $120. I just turned 64, so I'm not 65, so I can't opt out. I'd like to know how to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Brother Victor Norfus. I live at 225 Northwest Sixth Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm here to bring information and attention to ordinance that was passed back in 1924, segregating the city of Boynton and the African-American residents and the white residents of the city. What I did, and the way this kinda came about was, I was doing the history because of the Oyer family, and their history was documented in the city, I believe, in a history trail. But there was no African-American history in that trail. I wanted to offer this to the board. It's a book that I wrote documenting a lot of the black historical places in Boynton Beach for African-Americans. That's supposed to be placed on that trail, but somehow in the past year, it hasn't, it hasn't gone any further than, than me making the information, providing the information. But since then, there's been contacted by your arts department, where they're trying to do some type of art installations around the city commemorating that 100 years, which is what I was writing about. One of the things I had mentioned to them that's in the back of the book was creating a park called Unity Park, or a park dedicated to unity. And I wanted to ask if that park could be dedicated to Reverend Butler. A lot of people don't know who Reverend Butler is, but I do have his information in the back. But he was one of the people that incorporated this city in 1920. He was here back in the 1890s, so he attended St. Paul when it was founded. So those are the two earliest churches here. There's a lot of churches that he founded as well throughout Boynton, also out on 441, throughout the area. I think it's about 10 or 11. The reason why I was mentioning him is because I think that it should be dedicated to him. Because what he fought for, the area that the Veterans Park is on, that was originally his property. And he owned that along with some other white residents. But the city sued him, and he sued back, and he won. But he still didn't get to stay in the property. Obviously, we know that. But his children were great contributors to this city, as well as the religious contribution he did to the city and the economic contribution. We all know of Officer Butler, who was his son. Many of us know of Sarah Williams, who was his daughter. These two individuals did a lot to bring about integrating the city as a black police officer and as a former school administrator. I'll share some more with you later.
Thank you so much. Please leave a copy with us, so we could have that for the record. Oh, you got it? All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I got it.
All right. Next speaker, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Aaron Harvey, 608 Southwest Third Avenue. Since 19, no, since 2011, we've been having a flood problem over in our area. And every time the city come out, they say they can't find nothing wrong. I have pictures where we, every day of rain, our street is flooded. It went over, in the last couple of years, we had a real bad flooding over there. But still, I see they remodeling streets everywhere, roads everywhere, but they don't come in our neighborhood. I got pictures where water's standing in my driveway, a neighbor driveway. It cracking from one side to the other. About two years ago, they dug up part of my driveway and said it wasn't nothing wrong. They couldn't find it, but they replaced the pipe. Why would you dig it up? Nothing there. And after that, the street cricks, they have holes in it, and they won't do nothing else for it. And, you know, we pay taxes. And it seems like every year the taxes go up higher and higher and higher, but we can't get nothing done for our street. So I need somebody to do something. I'm finished.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next speaker.
Good evening. Evangeline Ward, 1518 North Sea Crest Boulevard. Native resident of Boynton Beach, 71 years. Very proud of that. On our last meeting, and I want to keep this before the dais, it was brought to you guys concerning speed bumps in the black community. And one part that I want us to especially pay attention to is Third and Fourth Street. That's over near Galaxy Elementary. And, and I guess, you know, we've had to do without so long. Certain times it just becomes a part of you. But when I'm driving up and down that streak and people speeding along with buses and everything, do you realize that only about 20 feet of that area is sidewalk? Most of our children, they're walking on the eaves of the road, and they've been doing it for years. And have we had accidents? Have we had some of our children killed? Yes, we have, but nothing has been done. So I really think that we really need to put something in action, and it was already said, we had like $58,000 to do that. Let us put the work where the money and the mouth is going, and not continuously, year after year, not have this prayer. So, you know, these are the things, you know, we have meetings and meetings, you know? Let's do like the Nike commercial, Nike commercial. Just do it. Okay? And they had, Ms. Cruz, she honored the Hispanic community, and, you know, I want us to, not only them, like she says, let's honor all of us. Okay? We're all taxpayers, all right? And just like we have the rainbow on the road, I want a Black Lives Matter right at the beginning. And somebody wanted me to have a Stop David, you understand? If we're gonna just honor one, let's honor all. And I think that's, I think that's equal. When we say the Pledge of Allegiance and Justice, you're honest, it's supposed to be equal for all. Boynton is supposed to be an equal opportunity city, and all of us pay taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kristy Ward. Lifetime resident in Boynton Beach. Week in and week out, we come here and our words fall on deaf ears, yet you tell us to trust the process. I would be the first to say I have trust issues, but I know that I am in good company. Trust is given, but if broken, the bridge to repair it is quite challenging, because when rebuilding, there has to be truth and transparency. But we are met with excuses and elusiveness. How can we trust when after our backdoor secret meetings are being held? How can we trust when the budget doesn't seem to add up? When the math is not mathing? There's a mishandling of funds somewhere. $54,000 was said to be allocated to speed bumps, particularly in District 2. We don't have them. So what has happened to that money? Where has it been reallocated to in the in-between time? Juneteenth at Sarah Sims was not spearheaded by the city of Boynton Beach, but rather, community leaders. And Tori Orr's phone number was put on the information, because he brought that information to the dais. You didn't do that. Maybe you put people there to be there on, just to be there, but you didn't do that. Trust the process, just as long as we don't question the process. Because the moment we question your actions, we are deemed combative or threatening. Because you carry these godlike complexes, as if we, you can't be touched or are beyond reproach. For every cause, there is an effect. For every action, there is a reaction. So this makes me wonder, have you all changed over the years? Or has this been you all along when you got into these positions? Thank you.
Are there any other public comment speakers? Seeing none in the room, there's one more. This is last call. Go ahead. Then we're gonna proceed online.
Hi, Ernest George McEnolly, 710 Northeast Seventh Street, condo 407. Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. Also known as Harbor Hall Inlet Club 1. It's one of two developments that was built 45 years ago by a local family. And I don't think I've ever lived or owned in a more problematic complex, in a more problematic city in terms of dealing with all this. But that's the way it is. Again, here's my birth certificate, here's my Florida driver's license, here's my passport. And I'd like to say that observing the meetings, I'm a pretty regular person coming to the meetings, and I think that the city has turned off just about everybody in the city, that nobody comes anymore. I don't blame them, because coming is, is, I'm not, I don't get depressed, but it is depressing. And it's disheartening that everyone continues to state that no matter what you come here and say, nothing gets done. And then you just have another meeting, and people say the same thing, and you just have another meeting. And it's hard to believe what happened on the 26th of December in 2021 has faded away. The death of a 13-year-old Boynton Beach child faded away. People are in fear to come in and say anything. They don't want to be retaliated against. It's hard to believe that it's disappeared. And my involvement with it is, I've decided to work behind the scenes, because every time I would come here and talk about it, that'd be a big problem for me. So I think that prayers for SJ are in order, but I don't expect the city to do anything except fight the lawsuits, which you deserve. And all the people who were involved have gotten very rich jobs other places. Lori, whatever her name is, is in, up in, everybody. Everybody was involved in the whole mess, is going other places and getting more money, and then the retirement from here. So it just, the city gets away with everything, and that's just the way it is. It's frightening, it's disheartening. But if you notice by the audience, it's not gonna change. This is what you've done to the city. You have no one here.
All right, we're gonna move on to online speakers. Manny, how many digital hands do we have?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, that means public comments or public audience has now concluded. We're now gonna move on to the administrative portion of the agenda, and we have
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Look, I just want to say something. I'm sorry to interrupt. Is Mario Guzman there? Mr. Guzman?
Mr. Guzman is in the chambers, yes.
Mario, can you please get with Ms. Ward about the site of those speed bumps, please? She should be in the front row.
All right, he has given the thumbs up. He'll be connected. No, thank you, Commissioner. All right, so in the administrative portion, we have several requests by several board commissioners to distribute their community support funds to a variety of organizations. And if there's no objections with my colleagues, what I'd like to do is just group your items together per each commissioner. So for example, may I have a second? We have a request here for, from Commissioner Hay to distribute $2,000 of his community support funds to Pathways to Prosperity, and $2,000 of his community support funds to the Boynton Beach Bulldogs Football Program. May I have a second to those requests?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Turkin. All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. All right. The next requests are from Commissioner Kelly to distribute $700 of her community support funds to the Bill Tome Foundation, and $400 of her community support funds to each of the seven Palm Beach County elementary schools within the city of Boynton Beach. May I have a second to those requests?
Motion to approve.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor Cruz made several requests. I'm gonna read them off. The first one is 1,000 of her community support funds to be allocated to the American Cancer Society, 1,500 to the Heart of Boynton Community Association, Toy Drive, in collaboration with Sergeant Deal, $500 to the Boynton Beach Bulldogs, $500 to the Boynton Beach High School, $500 to Congress Middle School, and $1,000 to the Volin Center. May I have a second for that request? We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Now we're moving on to Consent Agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull from Consent Agenda? Yes, Commissioner Kelly?
Mayor, I would like to pull 6K, please.
6K. Anything else from my colleagues? Commissioner Turkin?
Negative.
All right. So let's have a motion to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda first.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Hay and a second from Vice Mayor Cruz to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Now we will address item 6K, which reads, Proposed Resolution R-22-136 Authorize the interim city manager to sign the grant agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and the state of Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the Boynton Beach Eco Park Project. And who from staff is available to speak on this item? I see Mr. Guzman is here. Oh, one second. Go ahead.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my esteemed colleagues and members of the public. My name is Mario Guzman, Director of Public Works. Regarding item 6K, that is to come into agreement with the state of Florida Department for Environmental Protection for Boynton Beach Eco Project. Can I give you an update on the project?
Yeah, the reason that I pulled this is to just congratulate staff on getting on this grant and to give us a little bit information on, you know, on this grant and, and the progress of the Eco Park. Okay, thank you.
If it's okay, I'm just gonna touch on the history, where we're at now, and where we're gonna be going.
Perfect.
So Cliff Note version, history. About a year ago, we met with the public to kind of get their input on that. And then we met again, second quarter of this year, to get some more impact, knowing the, knowing that it's environmental in nature. To date, FDP is gonna contribute $364,250. That's the grant. The city is matching that grant as well. And we also have a grant from the Quantum Area, so it's gonna be about roughly a million dollars. So we had two community input meetings. As of yesterday, we had our 30% plan review. That's the fun part, where Mr. Casey Young and I, you know, the wish and needs, so we're trying to trim that down. So that's as of yesterday, we had our 30% review. We gave them our feedback. We should be getting the 60% review by October, 100% review by January, hopefully to go out to bid in February, awarding in May, construction in June, and we hope to have this done by the end of the fiscal year. That's kind of big picture, of course, with an asterisk in case, you know, things shift and move of the process. But the next, next point is the 60% review plans by October.
Great, thank you. I just, you know, like I said, I just wanted to thank staff for, you know, fighting so hard for these for, you know, fighting so hard for these grants. They, it's a great benefit to the parks. And this eco park is, this is exciting. So thank you for sharing that information.
All right, perfect, thank you, you're very welcome. I'll echo the sentiment to staff, to the team.
All right. Thank you, and Commissioner Kelly, I'm so glad you pulled this item because, as you know, being the former District Board Commissioner, this is extremely important to me, and I'm proud to be part of, part of the process. It's over sixty acres, guys, sixty acres. There's nothing like it, and it's going to be beautiful. And again, we heard from the public, we had several public input meetings, and it's going to remain as a passive park. And you said, I believe if I heard you correctly, cumulatively would be around a million dollars. All right, excellent, I'm really excited. I look forward to your progress. All right, so anything else from my colleagues on this particular item? Hearing none? Uh, yes.
I just wanted to also thank Casey Young, our Parks and Rec Director, and Tess Lacroix, our Grants Manager, for staying on top of this grant. It's a long time in the making, we've been waiting on the state for a long time. So I'm really excited to see it come through. And they've stayed diligent on getting updates and making sure we're on their radar, so thank you.
Absolutely. I was, I've been, I've been on edge waiting for it for a very long time. So thank you for your hard work, everybody. All right, may I have a motion to approve resolution number R-22-136?
So move.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz and a second from Commissioner Haye. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Is there any item that my colleagues would like to pull? Hearing none?
No, I just, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to make sure for the boat ramp improvement project that we're getting those fish stations included in that project.
That is item 7B. Let's go ahead and pull, Commissioner, is that your request?
Yes, please.
All right, let's pull 7B. And let's first have a motion to approve the remainder of consent bids and purchases over 100K.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz and a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now going to address item 7B, approved 12% contingency in the amount of $138,703.80 for the Harvey E. Oyer Junior Park Marina Boat Ramp Improvement Project. Mr. Guzman?
Good evening again. To answer your question, that's an enthusiastic yes, and we're getting three for the park. I give you an update on the park.
No, no, I drive by it. Yep, we're good, thank you.
So good, thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve 7B?
So move.
All right, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
I, I think it was Commissioner Haye who seconded that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to public hearing as item 8A, proposed resolution number R-22-115, declare the city owned vacant property, .1 acres located at southeast 21st Avenue, as surplus and direct staff and desired disposition process to follow. Counsel, I believe this would be your item to begin?
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Commission, this is a public hearing. The process under the city's code for this type of property is to declare it a surplus after a public hearing. So it has been noticed. Andrew Mack can have, ask you any, answer any questions you may have. But I believe the city did receive a letter of intent from a neighboring property owner who would like to purchase this liver. From what I understand, it's the only logical person that would purchase this. And so we would ask the city commission to conduct a public hearing. And if you move forward with declaring it surplus to allow the city to move forward with a direct sale proposal from that property owner.
All right, and just as a procedural question, Counsel, a simple motion, one motion for both to declare surplus as well as direct will be sufficient?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Mack, did you have any items to add on this?
No, just that we're glad that this product, this property was going to be returned back to private ownership. This will afford the city an opportunity to put this back on tax rules, and then it'll become part of the taxable property in the city.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else from staff, what I'd like to do is go to public comments. I assume the applicant is available to speak on this? All right, excellent, let's begin. Please approach the podium. And if there's anything else who would like to speak on this item, now would be the time to approach the podium. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Kristen Barra from Ward Damon. And as noted, we are just asking that the city find this to be surplus property so that my client Nicholas Melonowski can purchase the property as indicated in his letter of intent. He did purchase the neighboring property recently. He is looking to put this back on the city's tax rule to take ownership of the property and to continue maintaining the property.
All right, thank you. Well, that was quick. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, is there anybody online, Manny?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, no hands raised. Let's go to my colleagues, Commissioners, any questions or comments before we bring this to a vote? Hearing none? May I have a motion to approve resolution R-22-115?
Motion to approve resolution number R-22-115.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz and a second from Commissioner Haye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all those opposed say no, the ayes have it. Now, we do need some clarification. We have approved, just, I should have provided clarification earlier. The approval is for the declaration of surplus status first.
Yes.
All right, just want to make sure that's clear.
It's coming back to you to approve the sale. Tonight is just approved surplus and authorizing us to go with that procurement method of direct negotiation. It will come back to you to, for the approved sale or transaction.
Do you need any additional input from us?
You have enough traction? Yes, all right, we're good.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to city managers' report.
I would ask if I can have a few moments to read a statement that I've prepared because obviously this is my last meeting with you all.
Absolutely.
So I would, I would like to take a point of personal preference here, if you don't mind. Let me give, let me begin with a sincere thank you to the City Commission for placing your trust in me to be the interim city manager for the last five months. And to also extend my sincere thanks to the amazing and dedicated staff members who show up day after day with positivity and a sincere desire to do good things for our residents and visitors. In spite of the criticism and inherent challenges in the public service arena, the staff addressed many significant issues, bringing many to closure during this time. I will remind you that we are in a city of greater than 80,000 residents, and the few who attend or participate in public meetings do not always represent the majority of the population's desire, will, or needs. And even if a majority you see at a meeting supports an issue, it does not necessarily mean an affirmative response decision is the best thing for the greater good of the community. I share the following analogy with staff to ensure they stay positively focused and motivated and look for opportunities to serve efficiently and effectively proactively. When people turn on their water faucet and all works as intended, providing clean, quality water, and they receive a reasonable bill for those services, they are generally satisfied, and you do not receive any feedback. People do not generally praise the agency or employees for just doing their jobs. However, positive feedback via praise and recognition does happen sometimes, and it's important that we continue to do that. Conversely, you will hear negative feedback if a deviation from the norm is experienced, resulting in complaints and/or criticisms. After serving in various public service capacities for well over thirty-five years in municipal government, it is important to note that we must continue to listen to complaints and criticism with the intent of truly understanding. Prudent information resulting in pearls of wisdom may be found when we turn away from our instinctive reactionary defensive response and listen with the intent to understand where the other person is coming from. We should seek to talk with people instead of about people. We must remember the United States of America was founded on disagreement and civil discourse, and we can find great value in the words of those that disagree with us respectfully. However, when decisions are made, it is important to learn to live on in spite of what you believe to be unjust or wrong. We must continue to thrive and go forward. Team Boynton is second to none, and the minimum standard for all Boynton Beach employees is to perform one and a half times what the job requires. I've watched that religiously for the two years that I've been here. Please continue to recognize the excellence among you and sincerely appreciate these fine men and women who serve our community with great purpose and pride. The foundation is set for the future, and I ask that you support that future with thoughtful questions, recommendations, and decisions on behalf of the greater good of the community, not individual popularity or convenience. While you never want to forget the lessons of the past, your most important view is out the windshield, not missing the opportunity in front of you by constantly staring into the rearview mirror. So please stay focused on the bright future ahead and continue to accomplish great things on behalf of this community. In closing, I want to truly thank the Boynton Beach Fire Department members and my entire family for, without their love and support, I would not have been able to serve this great community with the dedication and focus that was necessary. I look forward to smoothly transitioning with the incoming city manager. We've had a great opportunity to do some great things, collaboration together. He'll have my number walking away if there's any questions or, or things that aren't clear. And I encourage you to throw the support that you gave me in the five months I was here to him in accomplishing great things for this city. And with that, I say thank you again and best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stables. I also want to say happy birthday, Mr. Stables. I just found-- Did they? Thank you. You have guided us during a very tumultuous time. And I've already expressed this to you, but thank you from the bottom of my heart. I saw you work, I saw you give yourself, and you remained humble and dedicated. And that is the honest truth. Thank you, sir. I wish you the best of luck, no matter what you do. And I hope you spend time with family and have those wonderful memories with them. So thank you.
I want to say--
Yes, go, go ahead, Commissioner.
I too would like to commend you for stepping up to the plate and hitting a home run on many occasions. I really appreciate the advice and the conversation that you and I had. I knew that we had something in common because my birthday was two days ago. So--
Happy belated birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you. And my wife was on this, on last Friday. But Jimmy really stepped up to the plate, and you were so correct in talking about Team Boynton. We're going to move ahead, okay? I am for the better good. I put Boynton before I put my personal opinions. I do plan to work with Dan Duggar, who is our new city manager, okay? And we will move Boynton ahead because an individual's personal feelings and all that kind of stuff is beside the point when it comes to the betterment of Boynton Beach and the citizens of Boynton Beach. So thank you again, and please leave me your telephone number, too.
All right. This is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yep, Jim, thank you so much for your service and dedication to the city. You will be missed, and happy birthday to you.
Anything else from my colleagues?
Yes, happy birthday, Chief. One thing, one thing I want to say that I learned from Chief Stables that I actually apply today in my civilian career. So one of the first, and this will kind of tell you a little bit about how the man operates. When I, when I first met with him, he told me a story about when he would hire, you know, and he'd have people, you know, people, candidates coming into his office, he would intentionally leave a little piece of trash by the wastebasket, right? One of the things that he looked for with those candidates was, are they going to walk by and ignore that piece of trash that's next to the wastebasket? Or are they going to pick it up and put it in? And it seems like such a silly, silly thing to grade somebody on, but it shows the importance of selection through character that I have learned from him that I apply today. And so, you know, to, to me, that, that tells you a lot about this man. And I wholeheartedly believe that the city is better now than when he, than when, is better now than when he adopted the interim city manager position. Chief, I hope you're in town next week. I want to say goodbye and thank you for everything you've done. You took this position in, you know, unprecedented times through a very difficult and heartbreaking situation that the city has gone through, and you have handled it with such poise that it'll be very hard, hard to measure. So, you know, I hope, I hope our next city manager can compete. But I thank you for everything you've done and not just being, you know, you know, the leader for the city and the staff, but, you know, just being a positive influence on myself personally. You know, always, always look up to people and try to keep an open mind and grab something. So I've definitely learned a lot from you, and I appreciate you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, I am here through the 30th, which is next Friday. So I will be around all next week.
Copy.
Commissioner Kelly?
I just, I feel like I need to talk because everyone else did. So, um, but no, when I met with Jim this week, I expressed my, my deepest thanks for taking, taking this position and, and guiding us and really being kind of our steadfast. So I just want to say thank you to you for your commitment to the city and to, you know, firstly, to the fire department and your commitment to, to our firemen and women. And, and to, you implemented some, some things at the fire department that they are very proud of and you should be very proud of. And lastly, enjoy your babies because you can't get that time back. So, so happy birthday.
All right, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is unfinished business. I'm sorry, sir, public comments have now closed. However, if there's an item related, if you'd like to speak at an item that's coming up, then you could speak at that time. All right, well, again, the procedure is public comments have now closed. Can, can we have staff personnel just clarify? We're happy to provide clarification. Thank you. The next item is proposed resolution, this is under unfinished business, proposed resolution number R-22-140, approve revisions to the community support funds policy to allow for equitable spending of the members of the city commission on a pro rata basis. Who provided this document? If you could introduce this item? I see Ms. Frederickson is coming up.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. So the revision that we're making to the community support funds policy tonight is really just a change in the way the funds are allocated. Currently, the funds all become available at the beginning of the fiscal year. And the seated commission at the time has the ability to spend them all at the beginning of the year. This changes it to make it available on a monthly basis so that when you have election years and things of that nature, that it won't all get spent. And so the incoming or seated commission at that point will have an ability to spend those funds as well.
Mara, I have a question for you. When you say made available at a monthly pro rata basis, let's just say in the first month of the fiscal year, how much would be available to that commissioner?
Oh, I believe this year it was--
Approximately.
You would have, so this year it was $6,000 for the year, so it would be--
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, fifteen hundred roughly.
Okay.
For the quarter.
For the quarter, I meant per month, because five hundred per month.
Yeah.
It, it is a $500 accrual per month.
Accrual per month, all right, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
So having said that--
So having said that, just understand that if you come in, if the commissioner comes in the first month, they can't give away $4,000 because they don't have it in their account. It's secure over, over time. So if you want to give that much, you have to wait several months until you acquire that amount. I just want to make that clear.
I understand. So, well, let's hear from my colleagues first. I have some thoughts about this. Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly. We'll go to Commissioner Turkin, then Vice Mayor Cruz. Any thoughts on this item?
No, I mean, I, I, I like the idea of splitting it up and making it, breaking it apart so when that you do have an election year that the person that is outgoing doesn't spend it all and 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 then there's other things that come up that could benefit from these funds. So I'm open to hearing what my colleagues say, but I like this idea.
Commissioner Turkin, any initial thoughts of this item? Oh, I think you're muted. We can't hear you.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
There you go. No, I kind of agree with my colleague, Commissioner Kelly. I think, you know, I didn't have any funds left by my predecessor, and so, you know, I like the quarterly idea.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. So I have, personally, I have very mixed feelings about this, and maybe it's my misunderstanding, so feel free to do clarify me if I have a misunderstanding. My concern with this is, for example, my colleagues just made, you know, several allocations of $1,000, 1,500, and so on. That would not be something that I could do because the funds would be available $500 at a time every month. So if I thought there was a great organization who needed $1,000 today or next week, that would limit my ability to support the community. Now, on the flip side, I understand the original intention, right? But for that reason, I would be not in favor of this. And, you know, if we have a disagreement, that's okay. But I just want to make sure that I or any of you, any of my colleagues, would have the same opportunity to do what you've just done now, which is sometimes we need to give $1,000 to make a significant impact. Sometimes we only need two. So it depends. Vice Mayor Cruz?
And these funds come in every year?
They're budgeted every year. They're an expense line item.
So if the concern is an election year, when an elected official theoretically loses their seat and have another person come in, can we make this rule for election years specifically only so that in the middle timeframes where we don't have an election year, commissioners that are sitting and are going to be here the whole year can use those funds? You know, I, I wouldn't want to create something that's invasive to helping the community, assuming that it's not an election year. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with this, but I can see the mayor's perspective as well. So is that a possibility?
We can revise the policy and bring it back to you, yeah.
If that's the will of the commission, how does, how do the others feel? Commissioner Kelly, I see your hand is up.
I understand your position, and I'm wondering if, can we almost do it instead of doing it quarterly, maybe even do it six months or something? I don't know, just to break it up so that you're not getting a chunk all at once. Maybe, you know, you can do half because then by an election would be in March, that would kind of cut you off. You would have 3,000, and then the balance would be for whoever would take that seat, you know, so would split it half and half.
So I hear two very good ideas, but I also see the city managers and.
So this actually came about from a discussion that I had with each and every one of you. So I want to make it clear that, you know, staff, we can create a policy that is thoughtful and accomplishes that. I would, I would remind us, though, that we're at the end of the fiscal year, and she's expended all of her dollars at the end of the fiscal year. So if we were to use that logic, you would have accrued those $500 for the 12 months, and you would have had the total of $6,000 at the end. So, yes, I understand, like, you know, Boynton Beach Bulldog Football is during a specific time that we may want to be able to contribute at that time. So we can pivot as staff and come up with whatever that looks like based on the collective will of you all. We wanted to get it in front of everyone so we could have this conversation, and then we can come back with the thoughtful product that you all are looking for collectively. So if you give us just a little bit of direction, we can walk away with that and craft a thoughtful policy.
I would recommend, because I heard two great ideas right now. Perhaps you could bring us back some options and see what the effects are of those different options. I see the hand of Commissioner Hay. Yes.
No, wait. My position is I brought this up sometime back because what I saw happening in election years where the sitting commissioner or mayor knew that they were going out, and they just spent the money, and the incoming one did not have any monies to spend. So I feel strong about that in terms of having some funding. But yet, to your point, Mayor, I would like, if the Bulldogs needed $2,000 in that first month, I would love to be able to give them those funding. I think we should really, my position is to look at those who are going out of office as the one that we make the adjustment. But if I'm just coming in and I got three years, and I want to give $2,000 the first month, I should be able to do that, okay? Because that agency, that organization need the funding right then to do what they want to do. So I, I'm supporting both of you, okay, and how we should approach this. That was the, my thought pattern when I first had the discussion with Jim is to be able to not be sitting here with, not being able to help financially to groups that are coming to you at the early part of the fiscal year. So that's my position.
Thank you, Commissioner. The intentions are very good, and I think we need to find a compromise, and it sounds like we have. So I look forward to staff coming back with some revisions because ideas incorporated. If there's nothing else from our colleagues, we're going to proceed. Thank you, Mara. Appreciate it. New business, item 11A, proposed resolution number R 22 dash 138, calling for general city election to be held on Tuesday, March 14, 2023, for the purpose of electing two city commissioners, calling for a general city runoff election to be held on Tuesday, March 28, 2023, if necessary. Counsel, anything additional to this?
No, I'd ask if the clerk has anything that clarifies, but it's just the basically.
An announcement.
Yes, it's announcing the election.
All right. Do we have public comment on this announcement?
Not required, but it's.
All right. If it's just an announcement, we'll proceed.
But you do vote on the resolution, so if anybody wanted to speak on it, they could.
All right. Well, let's just, for consistency, let's open the floor for public comments on this announcement. If you'd like to speak on this proposed resolution, R 22 dash 138, now's the time to approach the podium. Seeing none, Mani, is there anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised this time.
All right, public comments are now closed. Commissioners may have a motion to approve R 22 dash 138.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mack. That's okay.
During the, when we were giving away the community support funds, we did have somebody here that was wanting to acknowledge and say thank you to the commission. That's what the gentleman wanted to do.
Oh, okay.
Could we take an opportunity now they're here, they would like to take a picture? Could we recognize them? It's item 5F.
Absolutely. First, let me ask my colleagues because this is a break from normal protocol.
Absolutely.
That all right with my colleagues? All right. Thank you. You would like to come and speak to the podium on this item?
Yes.
All right. Excellent.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I just want to give you thank you. My name is Willie Akins, and I live at 726 Northeast First Street, Boynton Beach. I'm the president of the Heart of Boynton Community Activity. I just, I have members here, and we, we see that we've been granted, which is a blessing, granted with funds right now for our organization, which is our tour, tour fund drive. And I just want to give, give Commissioner Cruz a thank you for just seeing our needs and meeting our needs like that. And we love to take pictures. We have some of our members here, and we noticed that you didn't have a process of how you do that. So I think as you donate money and things like that, if you have people in the audience that just wants to say thank you for this opportunity, they should have that opportunity. And I do have people here that we want to take pictures and say thank you, and that's our gratitude. Because we come here, we ask, and we just want to make sure that we say thank you in a proper way and continue to do good jobs and good work. Can we do that?
Thank you so much. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead. Eleanor, maybe?
Thank you for this opportunity.
No, thank you. And thank you, Vice, Vice Mayor Cruz. Oh, yes, thank you. Remember the free CDs, guys? Get them in me all the time. Those were the good days.
Trust me, this is yours of mine.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Give them a minute or two. All right, thank you. We're going to proceed to the next item on the agenda, item 11B. It says, proposed resolution number R 22 dash 139. Appoint Daniel Dugger as city manager and approve appointment agreement. What I'd like to do is just open the floor for first for public comment, and after public comment, we will hear from my colleagues if they have any comments or questions about this agreement and the appointment. All right, so the floor is now open for public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, approach the podium now. Okay, I see one person.
Cindy Falco de Carrado. I'm hoping that he does right by the city and that you hear our voices and that it doesn't become one-sided. As I come into the meeting today and I see all these gentlemen in uniforms, it kind of is intimidating for other people to want to come in and share, even though this is where we do business and we talk with the people in the community. But I do think that you are capable. I think that when I heard you speak, that you said that you would be a fast learner, and I really hope that you hear and listen to we, the people. I, I have a little apprehension, but they chose to have you as our new city manager, so I want to congratulate you and God bless you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? I see no one else in the room. Let's go online. Mani, is there anybody else with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised this time.
All right, seeing no digital hands, public comments are now closed. I want to bring the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments on this item. Is there anything from my colleagues? Yes, Commissioner Hay?
I just, again, I want to say that I congratulate Dan Dugger. I am looking forward to working with him because Boynton Beach is the main item here, not Dan or Woodrow. So we've got to work together to make sure we maintain the direction that we're going in. We want developers to continue to look at our city. We want residents to look at entrepreneurs coming, people moving in with good housing and all these kinds of things. So in my mind, that's what's important. So I welcome Dan, and we're going to work together, whether he likes me or not.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I look forward to seeing you serve as our city manager and know that we expect the best of you. We expect that you will put the city first. We expect that you will work your butt off, and we will hold you accountable. So with that being said, and if there's nothing else from my colleagues.
Yeah, I have something. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Forget about me. Come on, man. So, yeah, I just want to kind of piggyback what you said about accountability. Chief Stables, you know, I think we can both agree I can apply some pressure along with staff, you know. You've got big shoes to fill with Chief Stables. He has really taken this place in this city to a new level, and we need to continue to do that. And I will, I will hold you accountable, and I will apply pressure to make sure that the people are served and are at the forefront of every move that the city makes. So I just want to be as transparent and blunt as possible with that. And I know you're going to do well. And so with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dan Dugger as our new city manager.
Commissioner Turkin, I'd like to ask if you could make a motion to not only appoint Dan Dugger, but just for clarification that you appoint Dan Dugger and approve his appointment agreement. May I have that motion?
Yeah, so move.
May I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we have a motion from Commissioner Turkin. We have a second from Vice Mayor Cruz. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Dugger. You are now our new city manager.
You forgot about Commissioner Kelly and myself, mister.
I was thinking that.
He's excited.
Absolutely, Mr. Dugger.
Beach.
I wanted to make this short. I, I'm not one to try to be long-winded. I try to be as clear and concise as possible. First of all, I want to thank the community of Boynton Beach for this opportunity. I know a lot of people say, hey, Dan, this person said this, this person says this. Did you read this media article? Did you read that media? Did you read that media article?" The answer is no. And I take criticism as passion to make sure that the city is moving in the right direction and doing well. I've known Commissioner Hay for well over a decade. He served as the Police Department's chaplain. So I do not take any of this personally. I live in the city of Boynton Beach. It's my home. It's my children's home. It's my family's home. And I just want to make sure that everyone here knows that I'm going to keep the city's best interests at heart. I do not quit. I work well into the night, sometimes 11, 12 o'clock, midnight. Met a lot of nice people. Harry, Susan, some brilliant ideas that she has that I know really cares about the, really cares about the city, and Barbara. What I do want to say is, I just want to take this time to offer my condolences to Shirley Casa. I knew her for quite some time. And I know I saw her at the meetings trying to do good, just like the majority of us are. But again, I want to thank the commission for the confidence they have in me. And Jim, those are our big shoes to fill. I really, it's bittersweet because I consider him a friend and he's been nothing but professional and just really, really trying to be the best mentor you can as far as helping me along and bringing some really positive ideas to the floor. Andrew, Catherine, you really do have an amazing staff here. Some brilliant minds, Adam and Eleanor. I know there are some people that I haven't, I've forgotten about. I did my best to try to make it to all our ancillary stations around the city, specifically the golf course, utilities, Coonam. Just really making an effort to walk through the building, meet our, the people that actually do the work on a day-to-day basis that matter. And I want to make sure that they understand that I'm a bottom-up type of leader. I believe that the work gets done from the bottom up. Those are the boots on the ground. And last but not least, Police Department. Tomorrow will be my last day as a, as a current law enforcement officer. And it's been 23 years of my life. So it's definitely bittersweet. So, and the guy who's been in my corner a long time and always believed in me, along with my wife, my kids, Sergeant Brian McDevitt. So everyone's got their boy. He's mine. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. We're now going to proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is 11C. And this was an item requested by Commissioner Kelly. Zoning and future use of the Meadows Green Space. Commissioner Kelly, would you like to open this item?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. So over the last several weeks, I have been in close contact with and heard from many residents from the Meadows and Nautica Sound with regard to an unsolicited LOI that came into the city. It's since been withdrawn. However, that wasn't, that didn't happen before I met with and spoke to and received countless emails about this very precious land that the city has. And so, but in meeting with the residents and in doing my research, I have questions for staff on, on the, some of the history of it, the zoning of it, and then also for legal on ways that we can further protect this land so that it stays a green space. District Four doesn't have much green space and I certainly am not ready to start giving it up. So I know I was able to speak to Adam a little bit about the zoning. And so I can just go, you want me to just go through my own questions that I have?
Absolutely.
So, Adam, I know, I noticed when I looked at, Assistant City Manager Mac had sent me all of the documents and the history of the land and it's zone PUD. And I wanted you to kind of explain to us and to me why it's zoned PUD when it is, its intended use is Forest Rec Park.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, members of the, Commissioner Kelly. These are two separate parcels, both controlled and owned by the city of Boynton Beach, as you both know. As part of the master plan development process for Meadows, former Knollwood, which is now Nautica Sound, they were approved as PUDs. And so as part of those master plans approvals, those parklands were included in the, in the, in the master development.
And then, so, so the other Meadows Park is also PUD as well as, and I noticed, the Boynton Lakes Park is also PUD. Is that merely because it's part of that master plan for each of those developments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is it zoned correctly?
It is, it is currently, it's a difficult question. Typically, you know, it's, this is not very, very common for us to be. Let me backtrack a little bit. So earlier today, we started going down a little bit of a rabbit hole on, on how these properties became about. We've identified one of the ways for one of the parcels, the five acre, the five acre piece. That piece was part of the master, master plan for Knollwood, which later became Nautica Sound. That's about as far as we've gotten so far. It's not, wouldn't be uncommon for us to do, to perform a city-initiated rezoning on the property, if that's what the city wished to do. You know, but we wanted to do a little bit more research on both these parcels.
Okay, thank you. And, but does, just changing that zoning, does it protect it any more than what it's zoned now? Like, for instance, if we went through the trouble of rezoning it as rec, does it protect that land from being developed any more than if it stayed as a PUD? And we put other restrictions on the property?
Yes, it would, it would provide, it would provide some, some more protections. But I will tell you also, as part of our quick analysis this morning, is we do have comprehensive plan language in the recreation element that would provide a protection. For example, if, if Polte, for example, made a development application to the city, in this case, we would, we highly likely re, submit that to the city commission recommending this approval based on some of the comp plan language that we've seen, which requires protection of dedicated parkland.
And so would rezoning it, I guess, restrict it any better or different than, say, a restricted covenant, which is what we talked about at the last meeting with regard to another land, another spot in Leisureville? I just want to make sure that if we're going, if we're going through the process or we're going to, you know, I want my colleagues to understand what, what would protect this best? You know, if, if it's zoning and a restriction or restricted covenant, what would protect this best in the long run? Because of my understanding that a rezoning is a vote of three to two, whereas restricted covenant is a supermajority vote of 5-0. So I just want to make sure that, is that in my, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it would add, it would add an extra step in the process. So I guess to answer your question, it would make it a little bit more difficult for somebody to do, you know, for somebody to develop that property in the future.
Okay. So my position is, and I'm, I'm hoping my colleagues will agree with me on this, is that I want the city to do whatever we can to protect this green space and protect this land. So I'm, so I would like to direct staff and then, of course, get everyone's input here to determine what is the best way to go about rezoning it. Because I understand it is a process since it's part of a huge, since it's part of the master plan. And then also ask legal to, you know, to kind of start that process of creating a restricted covenant. That's, I had countless phone calls and meetings and emails with residents. And this is something that, it wasn't this project, it's anything. They, so, and I want, and I'm going to continue to meet with the residents to see what we can do. Because another conversation with the city that I had was that when you look at Google Earth, developers are looking for plots of land and they see what looks like a vacant land and they go, "Who owns this? Where is it? How can we get that?" So I want to make sure that we're also, as a city, we're doing whatever we can to enhance that for the residents' use, but also make it not so appealing to a developer to track it down. So those are, that's kind of how this came about. So I'm going to finish talking.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I appreciate your leadership in this issue and, and I, I am on the same page with you. I support your desire to protect this area as green space. And I would love to hear from staff. I don't know if that's something they're prepared to do today. What exactly are our options that best protects that area? Which I believe was the goal that you're intending. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I don't know if that means rezoning and legal changes to the deed or a little bit of both. What would be that mechanism? And so I don't know if the council wants to chime in or just want to come back once you have that information ready.
Mayor, I would just, from a staff perspective, ask for us to do a little bit more research on, on how these parcels came about, whether any of them were dedicated via, in lieu of impact fees. So we would like to do a little bit more research. We have several tools in our planning toolbox that I think could help address this issue, whether it be, you know, conservation overlay, rezoning. You know, there could be some other tools in the toolbox. So we would like to potentially come back to the commission with those recommendations and those tools for you all to decide.
All right, excellent. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Vice Mayor Cruz?
I want to commend Commissioner Kelly for not just talking about it, but taking decisive action to protect her constituents. Thank you.
And I do support you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so anything for the Commissioner?
Yep, yep. No, I support you, Commissioner Kelly. I've spoken to many people as well. I brought this up a few meetings ago about, about that area becoming a passive part. But one thing I do want to bring up too is it shouldn't stop here. We, we talked at our, you know, strategic plan workshop that we wanted to look at green space and preserving our green space. But we also need to be mindful about the rapid development that's been going on. And I think Ms. Sawyer may have mentioned the term "spot zoning." We need to be mindful of these things. Because I think there's a lot that we're going to discover and a lot that I've discovered digging into PND. And so we have a height regulation coming up that I know city staff has been working very hard on, that we need to look into. I don't want to sidetrack from this, but I think that if we're focused on, on this, we need to be focused on everything that comes into play when it comes to walking away from increased density and preserving green space, thinking about the environment and trying to minimize our carbon footprint. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have now consensus to direct staff to bring us back some options on how best we could protect our green space throughout the city. And to be clear, it is throughout the city, not just the Meadows. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Correct, but in, yes.
All right, excellent.
But in particular.
Yes, Council.
Yeah, yeah, and I just want to say included in that, I would work legal. We discussed last meeting a declaration of covenants, restrictive covenants, and we can work that into the analysis as well.
This will be a team effort. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing this up. We're now going to move on to 12, item 12, Legal. A, discuss the draft local rules and procedures for commission meeting. And I'd like to begin by saying, this was an item that I requested and staff did a very good job putting together a draft in order to ensure that we really have a clear understanding of our protocol. All right, I want to make sure that not just one person knows or two people know, but all of us have some clarity on the procedure. That evens out the power, if you will, in the commission, where all of us will have the same knowledge base to move items forward. This is good for the collective. And there's also several items that we really just need to get some clarification on. For example, Commissioner Turkin asked the question earlier today, "What is the procedure for proclamations?", for example. So we've had an informal procedure in the past that we followed on a historical basis, but we need to have that clarified and in writing. So this evening, my goal is for us to have just an initial discussion. What are your thoughts on start time, for example, or the date or the procedure for this and that? And we can just go through the document. And, you know, we won't decide everything today. We won't figure it out. And maybe other aspects will come about a week from now and we'll think of it then. But we can at least give staff a little bit of direction to get them going, all right? So let me pull up the document. And if anybody would like to begin any initial thoughts and comments? Or would you like to proceed just sequentially? Would you guys like to proceed sequentially down the various sections? Or just if there's any particular points, we could just get to it?
I think we ought to just hit some particular points.
Sure, sure. Commissioner Hay, please begin.
Okay. I would just want to make some comments and make sure that we are clear. Because, for example, on, in section three, dot D as in delicious.
Okay.
We are saying we are not going to have any more than three proclamations, okay? And acknowledgements, along with just two presentations. And each one of those presentations is not to go over 10 minutes. That, that, what I hear.
That, that is the language of this draft.
Those, if we have more than that, then they are going to be done outside of the meeting or at the next meeting.
I would assume at the next meeting. And perhaps part of the discussion, Commissioner, is if something is time-sensitive, we could prioritize those presentations. But if three or four presentations are truly time-sensitive, which I haven't seen happen, but if that were to happen, you know, these rules are guidelines, right? And if we need to amend, we are the decision-making body. We can amend this if necessary, if we have an emergency of some sort. But this is a good starting point. And I think the intention here, and I may have been the one to bring this up, I don't recall, is sometimes, and you were there, Commissioner, you know, in the previous board, we would have the first hour just on proclamations and announcements, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, we want to make sure that we, we do that, but we also do that expeditiously and efficiently. And we get to the main business of the meeting. So we don't want to overdo it, in other words.
And I certainly agree with you. In that same section, that was a D, I believe it is, if you look down at I, 12I.
12I.
Yeah. The question that I have, because I've, I've seen it done both ways and I want to be, be clear. We have two readings. On the first reading, we don't necessarily have to have public input.
I, my.
Public input comes on the second reading.
Yes.
That was when I first came in, back in 2007. Has that changed?
Let's ask Council. I mean, this is a legal matter.
Good evening. Only certain ordinances require two public hearings. So if it's an ordinance, for example, that changes the list of permitted uses for certain types of land, changes like rezonings, they need two public hearings, but otherwise you're correct. An ordinance is adopted with two public readings of the title, but only one public hearing is required. And that's usually traditionally at your second.
The second one.
Second reading. So you, you're not required to have any public hearing or public input on the first reading of ordinances, unless it's required by statute.
Okay, so on that note, Commissioner and colleagues, I would like to offer an amendment to this, just a recommendation, which is if we're not having public comment until the second reading, I would suggest that we have the presentation on the second reading. So, because it makes no sense to me for staff to present on the first one, public doesn't get to comment on it. They get to comment the second time, but they don't see the presentation. So I think you should do them both simultaneously. So let's move the presentation to the second reading when we have public comment during the second reading.
I can live with that.
Okay. Did you have a comment as well? Or was, okay. All right, anything else, Commissioner Hay, that caught your eye?
Yes. And section six. I.
One second. Section.
Yeah, but it's not something that's there, I think needs to be there.
This is voting, the voting section?
Right. I think something needs to be said about physical absence and voting. I think it should be addressed in terms of you need a physical majority, a quorum to do, to have the meeting. Okay?
That's correct. We need a physical quorum to have a meeting.
Right. But if someone is is absent, they cannot be counted as part of. I think something, you know where I'm going here?
What did we do during COVID?
Well, okay, let me, during COVID, there was a state of emergency and the city adopted a series of ordinances and resolutions to allow you to have meetings without a physical quorum. Okay, in the absence of any type of emergency, you need to have a physical quorum in the room, which is three of you. Okay? Traditionally, participation by phone, Zoom, this policy of the commission, it's it's limited to exigent circumstances. And if you have a physical quorum and you have someone like Commissioner Turk in this evening, they can participate and they can vote. I thought there was a section on here. I don't think it's in six, but there's a there's a section in here on how to handle that provision. And I'm looking to see if I can find it.
It's nine. It's under general provisions, Commissioner.
Nine A.
Communication, yeah.
Which is on page 10 of 11 of the document.
Yes. But the assumption here is you first must have a physical quorum.
That's, yes, absent in a state of emergency, you have to have a physical quorum in the room.
Is that in the document on page at nine A? Or something in your words?
Well, I mean, that that's the law, but we can put it in here in the absence of a, yeah, in the absence of a state of.
Be good to have it in there.
Okay.
To have it in there.
Definitely.
More clarity, more clarifications always a good thing. Okay.
So the document will be completed in itself. Just one more.
There is a section on page four, the very first section.
Page four.
That speaks to quorum.
Yeah.
Yep.
And this is this is a reflection of the state statute. The state is the one that guides the quorum requirements.
Oh, there it is.
So when the city implemented the ordinances and resolutions to allow us to do the remote meetings during COVID, that was following the state's provision for that option. We wouldn't be able to do that on our own because the state statute requires us to meet quorum. They rescinded that during COVID, but once the state of emergency for the entire state was rescinded, that was removed. So we're now back to the in-person quorum as per the state statute.
I think we could add a sentence in nine A that clarifies because it kind of goes back. Even if you want to reference it back, this says in the absence of a declared state of emergency that would provide otherwise, a physical quorum is required and in order, you know, for commissioners to then attend by other means. Will that clarify that, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
And a physical quorum is three.
Three.
Is that correct?
Three, three physical. One last one.
Yes, go ahead. Let's knock it out and we'll go around the desk.
And and item seven, dot E as in Ethel, dot three. It talks about the speakers not going over one hour. The these. If we go over one hour, the left double speakers, that doesn't sound nice. The speakers who have not had.
The remaining speakers.
The remaining speakers. Will they be next meeting or they would be at the end of the of that meeting to speak? How are we going to handle that? I don't think that's in there.
Commissioner, you know, Mike, can we take just a backtrack for a moment? Because what you're referring to, E three, right? It says public audience.
Yeah, double E three.
It's a seven E three. The public audience section of the agenda is limited to one hour total, allowing three minutes maximum per speaker. So what exactly is the definition of public audience? And we had a structure for the agenda in page three. So I just want to clarify. So there's two moments or two time periods by which members of the public can speak. There's, if you're looking at the agenda structure, page three, number four, public comments on agenda items. And then there is a broader section called broadly public audience. And public audience is anything, but they want to comment on that necessarily on the agenda. So it's, what it's saying here is you want to limit that to one hour?
Well, yeah, it says here that public audience section of the agenda is limited to one hour total, that all of the speakers, that's my.
So I am actually not in favor of doing that. That's my initial position. I don't know my.
I'm not either. That's why I'm breaking it up.
I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Hay. I don't think there should be a time limit for people to speak. Sometimes we have public audience, that's two hours. Sometimes we have it, that's 10 minutes. But everyone should have the right to speak and virtually too for the for public audience.
So commissioners, this is, again, just just for clarification purposes, I'm on the same page as you. This is public audience, which comes after the city has done the majority of its business. And because it's after we've done our business, I don't mind, you know, hearing more people speak at that time. But two things, two, I want to make two points on this. Number one, in the earlier public comment period, public comment on agenda items, I think we should have some sort of time limit.
Absolutely.
Only because, not because I don't want to hear from everybody, only because I don't want to make decisions about, you know, hundreds and thousands of dollars and other resolutions and ordinances at 11, 12 midnight. Making decisions that late into the night is not a good thing either. So I just want to make sure we have some sort of compromise. So, you know, one proposal could be, I'm just throwing this out there, we limit it to an hour, maybe two hours. And then if we need to amend that, we'll amend it at that moment, you know, maybe allow another 30 minutes because we see five more people speak.
Right.
My only intention is I don't want to make decisions late into the evening. That's not good. I don't know who makes good decisions at midnight.
Do the right.
Right. But then.
Excellent. Wait to have.
For the second public comment, you know, I'm comfortable with it being more open, you know? But at the same time, how long do we want to be here? It doesn't happen often, but what if public comments happen to be three, four, five hours long? I know Mr. Staples told me in other cities, they've had meetings until what? Six in the morning? I mean, I mean, that's also, you know.
Grab your coffee.
No.
So as a general thought, maybe we should at some point, you know, call it a recess and we can resume another day. You know, I just, I don't think anybody should be here three in the morning. That's all I'm saying. So Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that in another part of this paperwork, it talks about meeting times and that we would end by 11 unless otherwise extended.
I see.
So they do, it does talk about that. And if if for some reason the meeting is adjourned because any unfinished business would then go to the next, the next scheduled meeting. So I just that it is kind of addressed, but I agree.
Good.
That I agree otherwise.
So for clarity's sake, you're saying at 11 is kind of like our.
Cut off.
Our cutoff.
Right.
We may extend for 30 minutes if that's the will of the majority.
Right.
Right.
But otherwise, we'll proceed to to another day.
About.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
That's in here.
Okay.
That's on page two, section B.
Right.
Section B, I want to make sure.
To be.
Under meetings.
Yes, I'll end by 11.
You're not to be.
You can extend the meeting by consensus vote.
Okay, sounds good. Excellent. We have a backstop.
I was going, while we're on meetings, because I don't know the answer to this and I was kind of curious myself, why these two commission meetings that involve the budget were moved to Thursday? I'm I'm curious for myself. They were just moved on my calendar and I just came because it's my job. But I'm kind of curious myself as to why these these two commission meetings were moved to Thursday. That's.
Well, who would know more, Mr. Stable?
I can speak to that. So this had to do with the way the trim notices are published and how we publish. So we had to adjust based on what was happening with the county. So that that's it in a nutshell.
We we're not permitted to have our public hearings on the same nights as the school district and the county. And and I'm not sure, and then there was some timing issues with the notice for the fire assessment that moved the first meeting to a Thursday. And so maybe you kept it Thursdays to be consistent for the month. But but cities all over moved their meetings because if they want, they don't want to have a separate meeting for budget, which you can do. You could have, if your regular meeting fell on the same night as school district and or county, you could still meet that night, do everything but budget and come back the next night and do budget. But a lot, most cities combine those two meetings and then just move the regular meeting to accommodate it.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Turkin, let's go to you. Did you have any thoughts or questions about these sections?
Nope. I think I think I already spoke on what was critical to me. You know, I do like the idea of the cap at 11:00 PM. I just want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, both in person and virtual. I think, you know, as time goes on, we become innovative and more efficient. And so some people can't make it down to City Hall. You know, a lot of people work, you know, have families, kids. So I think making sure that we allow that virtual option to continue is important.
Commissioner, since you brought it up, let's have that discussion about virtual and on that same topic, the discussion on public comment cards. I don't know where the idea came from, but I like the idea of public comment cards. And as we've seen earlier today, we've had people who submitted letters who couldn't come here for whatever reason. But they also had an opportunity to send their, you know, send their thoughts and have that be added to the record. In terms of virtual, I want to make sure that, A, we have public comment cards as an option. All right. So I know, for example, some people would chat into the, type into the chat box and we'd read that comment, but we should do that more formally and we should have that on the public comment card. So that's another way for people to communicate online. Now, in terms of virtual speakers, I do have mixed feelings about that. And I wanted to just be honest and and share that. Because it's not that I don't want to hear from people. Please don't misunderstand. I do. But when you are, and as a teacher who went through the COVID and with virtual teaching, one of our concerns, which is the same thing here, is how do we know that person is who they say they are online? You know, what's the accountability? If they're in the room, we can see them, so we know who they are. But I don't want people online just making up fake names, pretending to be somebody and and we won't know, right? So I wish we had some more accountability with that. And for that reason, I would recommend that, you know, we allow people to view the meetings online and we allow people to submit, to speak via public comment card. But I'm not so sure if I want people to, you know, just make up a name and call themselves so and so and pretend to be somebody. It's really difficult for me. But that's my only intention. I just want some accountability of who the speaker is. So I'm going to throw that out there, see what my colleagues think. Commissioner Hay?
Now, that has been problematic in the past. I've heard comments about people saying that they are someone and it really was not that person at all. So that is a concern. One somewhat hard-nosed approach would be that you must be physically present if you want to speak. You can listen online but not speak. That's that's that solved the problem. But maybe we want to think about it a little bit and see if there's some other means with the with the comment cards and letters to see how we can resolve this. But it is a problem. And again, I, I don't know whether you're telling me the truth or not, but they say a lot of time when you when you have online, that there's a, you're speaking to a lot of people, not just one person that that we think we're talking to. And they'll, I don't, I don't know if that's a problem, but but it's deceptive and that's what bothers me. Okay? And and that, but that one incident where this person was not the individual that we thought they were, that really disturbed me. So I'm not sure what the what the answer is. I said one hard nose would be, you want to speak, you got to be present. I mean, that's one way we could handle it. You could listen online, but you can't speak. But there may be some other options out there. I don't know. I want to take a look.
Commissioner, we had hard hard lined on this, but we could take a compromise. I think public comment card and online is a compromise, so they still can speak.
Yes, I don't think we should be so critical as hard line that you can't, if you can't make it, you can't speak. Because I just think about, you know, maybe the elderly man or woman that maybe can't drive at night or maybe has trouble, you know, leaving their home and they have an opportunity to speak and maybe voice something that they usually don't have an opportunity to because they can't get to the commission meeting. I mean, I understand, you know, the concern and I I share the concern about, you know, the accountability of people logging online. I don't think, I think if we looked at the data, I don't think that would probably be, you know, maybe a couple compared to a lot of people that do attend and do speak. I don't think that we should, you know, punish everyone for the actions that were won, you know, especially those who may need help, you know, and can't get to the, can't get to City Hall on their own. So I think there, the hard line of can't show up, can't speak, I 100% disagree with that. I think that's blocking people's voices, especially those who, you know, maybe elderly or have disability issues and can't, you know, or opportunities and can't make it to the meeting. I think if anything, we do need to do some type of public card, but we do need a lot of these voices to be heard.
Just for a way of background information, residents can submit comments prior to the meeting. We read someone to the record tonight.
Yes.
So it wouldn't be the same, obviously, as hearing their voice, but they do have the option to make their comments and have them read into the record and they're part of the minutes and everything.
Excellent. It seems like there's no form for that, right? That was more like just an email or.
We receive them by emails, but we can certainly put the form online the way you suggested.
The public comment card online because they'll standardize it, same information, same way. Okay.
Yep. And I think we need to advertise that we're doing this and make it well known to the public. So, you know, maybe someone who has an issue that comes up, you know, tries to go online and then doesn't know how to navigate to get their voice heard. So I think if we make the switch, that we definitely need to publicize it and get it out via social media and other avenues. I don't know how you guys feel, but I think that is important, you know, kind of what Commissioner Kelly touched on with the meetings being changed to Thursday, you know, making sure that we're as transparent and doing our best to communicate that to the public.
100%, Commissioner Turkin, we would be, the clerk's office staff, sorry, mainly, would be all hands on deck as we roll this out. So they'll be here physically to help facilitate the process and get people acclimated to it. The other thing is we'll roll all this out on social media and have a lot of opportunities for people to to learn prior to the first, the first go live for it.
Very good. I see the city clerk wants to add something to that.
I just wanted to ask if there can probably be a time limit as to when the public comment cards online can be submitted? Because as I'm typing here, I can't monitor an email as well. So just maybe.
Do we not have a time limit added already? I thought I'd read something somewhere. If not, we'll make up a time limit. I just, I thought it was already in there.
That's logistics we can we can get with because the traditional comment card is due before the point in time where that portion starts. So it was just a matter of if you extended that same courtesy that folks watching online, we have some person besides the clerk who's, you know, taking minutes and whatnot, have to monitor those cards to make sure that they are noticed and received.
All right. I see a hand from Vice Mayor Cruz. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. I think that during the pandemic and after, people have gotten used to doing their public comments online and being able to just unmute themselves. I'm sure that was a technological challenge for some already in itself. Since 2020, I think changing to virtual comment cards is going to be invasive to people that are not technology savvy, like our seniors. I don't think that we need to make it more complicated than it is. And I think that we need to make it easier for people to voice their concerns. We barely have people coming to the meetings at all. We barely have any public comment. You know, I mean, sometimes we do, but online. And I think that creating that barrier of making. online. And I think that creating that barrier of making people do public comment written online is going to create, um, a barrier for people that are technology challenged or don't know how to do it. So I do not support that. I think we need to keep it as is right now. And allow people to speak virtually if they need to. If they're in person, they can fill out a piece of paper and write it. But if they're not in person and they physically don't know how to use a computer or they don't know how to, um, fill out the comment card, who's going to teach them? Like, who's going to train them to do that? Where we don't have the bandwidth to, to train everyone. Like, there's just no way to be inclusive. Um, and I, I disagree with them respectfully.
Yeah. I think, you know, just hearing, uh, Maylie, city clerk mentioned, you know, hey, let's get a time limit for these common cards online. I think we're complicating more than what we have already. And so I think for the sake of, you know, like, you know, Chief Stables mentioned, the city staff works one and a half times harder than they need to. Like, let's keep it how it is. People know how it works. You know, it offers the opportunity for people who maybe cannot make it to the meetings, you know, regardless of their situation, to continue to speak. Um, again, I don't think we should allow, you know, actions of, of one discredit the voices of all. So I'm, I'm, I'm with Vice Mayor on this. I think we should leave it as it is.
All right. Any other comments? Uh, Commissioner Kelly, see your hand is up?
Yeah, I just, I am, I am mixed on this. I see the benefit of having, um, I think that one of the, um, one of the great things that, you know, came out of this is, is this transition to having, you know, the, the meetings being accessible to people who are shut in in their homes or can't make it for their own reasons. I know that, um, in talking to residents, there's a lot more online that are listening and are, you know, not maybe actively participating, but they do know what's going on in the city and they are present. They might not be in this room, but they are there. But then we've also had issues where we have technical difficulties. People don't think that they're, you know, that they're being seen or their hands aren't raised. And so then we run into an issue where, um, where people get frustrated that, you know, where was their hand raised correctly? Was it not? Are they having technical difficulties? Are they not? And so I just, I have concerns with, and, and I totally agree that, you know, access to the shut-ins and, and our residents who can't make it to the meetings in person and want to participate can. But I just, I, I almost want, would like staff to kind of see what, how other, you know, moving for how other cities are doing this and, and, and handling this when you have, you know, people who, uh, you know, are, are they still actively participating in virtual, um, meetings? Is it strictly just for viewing? Um, I mean, so I, I'm kind of on a, I'm kind of mixed on it because I can see everyone's point as to why it benefits to have, um, the ability for people to appear and to speak because it's very important. But at the same time, if, if we're doing a disservice by technical issues and, and and not allowing somebody to speak accidentally or technologically or whatever, then are we doing everything we can, I guess, is my concern.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on that, Commissioner, because I think you hit on some of the points. Where it seems to me that we're in the agreement that we're, we're, our goal here is not to lessen public participation. But how do we, it's just, you, you said it already, Commissioner. It seems like from what we've heard, from the complaints we've got, it's actually more difficult to do this than somebody typing in an email form format, which would be a whole lot easier than digital hand sprays and unmuting, muting and all of that. It just, from what I've heard from the public, that's more difficult. We've had more issues with that than somebody just writing uh, their comments in. And so, uh, we have the same goal. We just perceive differently what's harder or what's easier. And I think what's easier is to just type, you know, people have been doing that before and, um, no difficulty there. But, um, let's hear from Commissioner Hay.
Well, I've never really been a big proponent of, uh, the cards, uh, the public audience speaker cards. But in this case, I can see the advantage based on where we are right now. People have a tendency to, um, come to this meeting when they want to. People will do what they want to do, uh, whether it be online or come into this meeting. It, it, it really boils down as to what are we really trying to accomplish here as, as a commission? Is it, uh, trying to make life easier?
Yes.
Or, okay.
That's what I want.
All right.
I want to avoid the technical issues, Commissioner. We've had several, many.
But there's some other issues that we do need to consider. Like when they do come, there needs to be some type of control in terms of time and what is said and yada, yada, yeah. So I, I, I'm, I can, I would like to, first of all, hear from the audience that's here, a little bit about their thinking. But I, I do like what, uh, Commissioner Kelly was saying that, let's take a look at some of the other cities and see what they're doing and, uh, what, uh, roadblocks they have, uh, run up to. I've attended several meetings. Uh, the county uses cards. Okay. And other, other cities that I've attended, they use cards. So let's just kind of put the feel out there. We don't have to make a decision tonight.
No, this is our initial discussion.
And, and I, I would like to hear, uh, input from the audience that, that's here, those who may be still online. Okay. And, and let's go down this road, uh, and, and so we can make the right, a good bite at the apple because we, we don't want to keep being wishy-washy. So if that would be okay, we could just.
That, that is absolutely okay with me to have public audience, but I would ask that I see two people standing. You know, not yet. Let us finish the conversation and then we will have public comments, right? There's, there's some other topics that we want to discuss first and this way they get to hear everything and they can comment on everything that's been said.
Can I, Mayor, can I ask for clarification on one thing?
Yes.
So I will put out a question to the cities in Palm Beach County to see who's still allowing virtual participation. And also who uses speaker cards. Is that correct?
Yes, let's find out. Let's find out where other cities are at.
Right.
How they're handling the virtual aspect of it.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, I'd also like to discuss a few other things. I'm sure some of you may have questions. Commissioner Turkin brought it up about process for proclamation. But even before that, if we could look on page four, C on page four, can I just get some clarification on this line item? Agenda approval, only items listed on the official agenda at time of publishing will be acted upon. Did you mean approval, not publishing? Because we do add items afterwards. Is that what was intended? I don't know who wrote this. Uh, C, only items listed on the official agenda at time of publishing.
Can you say what page you're on?
Page four. And C.
And, and can we get a more, more clarification on acted upon? It's very broad. Yeah, Ma- Mayor, I'm, I'm right there with you. I want like a full, full clarification.
I think the intent of this is try to, um, what's on, maybe that sentence doesn't go with this item. Is this item is supposed to, um, address just what agenda approval means. It's, you know, at the time to add, delete, whatever, and maybe we'll clarify that.
Okay.
Um, I think there's something else later on about when things are added, how things are added after. So I think Catherine, what we should do is just reach, just change that sentence to explain what the agenda approval item is.
At the start of the meeting.
Yeah. You know how each one of these says what it is. Agenda approval is where the commission looks at the agenda, makes determination whether to, whether items are pulled, um, added. Well, you don't, you, you only add things if it's business-wise or emergency and it's provided there. But that's, but anyway, the, the general description of what goes on there, which is, you know, as opposed to what that sentence is. I think that sentence might be out of place.
Yeah. I, I just think about like tonight, you know, Commissioner Kelly added the conversation about rezoning of the park. So I want to make sure if something like that pops up, we have the ability, you know, to act on that, you know? I, I don't want to remove that because it wasn't officially on there prior. You know, things come up, things happen.
Uh, Vice Mayor Cruz, you have your hand up?
Yes, Mayor. Um, it makes me think that if we were to approve this, we would be tying our own hands. And I think that's unnecessary, um, in case of emergencies or if it happens to be that in one of our districts, some, you know, uh, controversial issue comes up after the agenda's been published. If we create this rule, we would be tying the hands of the commissioner to be able to deal with the issue as it's a hot issue, as it's a hot topic and as it's relevant to the constituents. So I think that, that might be tying our hands a bit.
Commissioner Hay.
I would like to say that it only takes three votes of this commission to, to do something. Yes, we have policies and procedures and all that, but if, a- as a vice mayor, we're just saying, if we have an emergency or something like that, it only takes three votes to alter for this particular occasion. So I think we still have.
By authority, amend the agenda, is that what you meant?
To amend the agenda.
Yes.
So we still have that authority. It won't be taken away from us. Okay? We can still add, just like we, as Turkin was saying, uh, Kelly added the, the zoning in the, in the Meadows tonight. And we, we dealt with it. So.
Vice Mayor?
The way I read this, it says verbatim, only items listed on the official agenda at time of publishing will be acted upon. Therefore, anything that is brought up to the commission meeting after publishing of the agenda and not on the official agenda will not be acted upon.
Well, we're saying that that should be reworded or taken out.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we just, uh, let's 86 that, remove that completely.
Right. But yeah, I think we all on the same.
Sorry, I kind of have a legal brain a little bit, so the attorney can.
Yes, counsel, let's hear from.
Two things. First, we're going to change that sentence. Again, it's out of, it's out of context. Second, I think everybody should look at page five K, add-on agenda items. That's where we're talking about what can be added on after publication, but before we get here and what can be added on at a meeting. And you're, it is intended because you have to balance the notice of the public and they see what you're going to act on. And so you know, the, the thing that we, was added tonight, I considered more of a discussion and consensus type item. If it's something for final action, it should be really in exigent circumstance, urgent or something like that. And so this is provide, again, guidelines that we're proposing to you for those two scenarios. What, when something is, needs to be added on after publication, but before you get here. And then the second scenario, something that needs to be added at the meeting itself. And perhaps we could clarify that, you know, um, discussion items not intended for final action could is, is not subject to the restrictions of emergency or urgent or something like that. Whatever feedback you all want, but again, we have to balance when you publish your, your, your agenda. You know, that, that public has notice of what you intend to take final action on. But, but again, you're right. You, there has to be opportunity and, and an ability to put something on if it's urgent, can't wait two weeks, um, or it may be if it's non-final action where you can just have discussion and consensus.
Understand.
K is, K is where you want to look.
Okay.
That's where that, that's where that is governed.
Is there anything else on this item? Otherwise, I'd like to, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So just for clarity.
Okay.
Okay. If we were to amend this language to say items listed on the agenda, on the official agenda at time of publishing will be acted upon except for add-on agenda items, maybe that would include.
Yeah, we could do that. But again, I think, I think, again, I'm sorry about that, but the sentence is out of, out of whack. It, it doesn't, you know, that doesn't really describe what agenda approval does. But we can, we'll work on that and clarify that before you, you get it back again. But, I mean, may have distracted us from K, which is where that issue really is governed.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to bring up another topic here, which is about proclamation. Commissioner Turkin asked earlier, I want to make sure we discuss it. What is the process to add on a proclamation? Historically, it's been people make a request. The request goes to the city clerk. City clerk speaks with the city manager and they put it on the agenda.
Can I make a request? Wait, are we?
Yes. I suppose, you know, there's nothing stopping any of the commissioners to make a request to add on. In fact, I, from my, if I understand correctly, Vice Mayor Cruz made that request to add the proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month.
Oh, okay. Great. So I sent an email to, um, city clerk and city manager and interim city manager, Chief Stables. For November, I would like to make November, uh, proclamation for Veterans and Patriots Month, please.
Okay. Um, so we're talking about process right now. And I was about to say, Commissioner, that, as a safeguard, because, you know, if one person makes a proclamation request and not you, I'm not talking about you, uh, that proclamation request could be completely out of bounds with the city. It could be nothing to do with us. And so I wanted to create some sort of safeguard mechanism where we all see it first before we even put it on the agenda or before we even approve it. So one thought would be, let's say you submit a request, Commissioner, and another commissioner submits a request. Can we put that in consent agenda? So, or, or some variation. So we all say, hey, we're okay with this. It meets criteria. It is relevant to the city. Um, and it's for the general welfare, welfare of the city. That's not a final thought. That's, it's just a thought. My intention being is just so we're all aware of this and it passes some sort of standards. And it's not, you know, something unrelated to the city.
Make a comment or?
Yes, absolutely.
So we have a calendar that the lovely Candace put together that has all of, um, the previous proclamations and the months and the designations and things. What we could do is send that to you all and see which ones you support and kind of get, we can send that out and distribute it that way. That way, we're planning ahead. We're not just ad hoc waiting for the, you know, the resident that loves this, you know, initiative or the organization that the initiative is about to reach out to us. We're proactive about getting that stuff on the agenda.
I appreciate you saying that because there are, you know, every, every year, it's, some of them are the same. Like, we need to just have it on, on the calendar, ready to go. Related to this, I wanted to ask my colleagues your thoughts on, um, off-site proclamations. So for example, the Constitution Week proclamation, uh, Ms. Ferrer could not physically be here today, which is why I gave it to her, uh, yesterday. I don't think we have a procedure for that or any protocol. And so I just wanted to make sure that was okay with all of you. And let's say, for example, Commissioner Kelly, you wanted to make a proclamation and bring it to the event. I would be okay with that. But, but I wanted to throw that out there so you have that option. All of you have that option if you wanted to do that. County commissioners do the same thing, just that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. And, and Catherine, thank you for sharing that. I think, uh, that calendar will be super helpful. Yes, Mayor, I agree with you. I think, I don't see a problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think when, and we'll, I think we should research this, but I think when there's that type of where you bring the proclamation to the group or you recognize somebody outside, off-site, that I, I want to say that that's approved by the body first, right? Before you go do it. You don't just do it on behalf of the city commission.
Process to do that.
Right. So we could, we could put something in there about off, off, you know, um, proclamations outside of city commission would have to be approved by the commission in advance or something like that.
So I was thinking maybe at the end of every meeting, if, uh, you know, I always ask for you guys, do you have any final comments or questions? Let's say, let's just use Commissioner Vice Mayor Cruz, for example. She, at the end of the meeting will say, uh, colleagues, I'd like to make a request to make an off-site proclamation for this reason at this location and time. And then having made that request, we put it under the agenda in the following meeting so we can approve that. Which part of the agenda? I don't know. But all right. So just throwing that out there. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, just on that same line of, of, I think that's one of those things you were talking about, maybe putting them on like a consent agenda. And I would think like, that would be something, if it's going to be an off-site proclamation or it's going to be something that maybe that's some, that one, it could be, um, you know, to allow the, permit the vice mayor to present the proclamation or whatever. Um, and it wouldn't necessarily be something that would need to be under presentation and we wouldn't talk about it. But it would end up, it would get approved and that we would know about it and just have knowledge. Um, so that's, that was kind of my thought on that was, um, but I, I don't want to, I worry that if we put all the proclamations that are being proposed under consent and we're all kind of voting on it, I have. I have different things that I support, just like the Vice Mayor does and just like you do. So I, I don't know that it needs to be on the consent agenda necessarily, but at least make it aware, make, you know, make us aware. And I think the calendar will help know what, what proclamations we've done, which are upcoming, who maybe the contacts were, so that we can reach out and see. I don't know, I'm just, I know we're feeling this out, but.
I understand. I think we're all, we're all just, you know, working it through as well. So let me ask you, in the rare instance, somebody makes a request and it's extremely controversial, has nothing to do with the city, two or three of us are against it, or, you know, whatever the case may be, what would be the procedure then? So great, it's on the calendar, great, we can all see it. But then what is the safe safeguard?
I mean, just thinking off the top of my head, you, if you have that calendar of of annual proclamations, you know, each January, you could just have it approved by commission action. And that would guide those standing proclamations through the calendar year. Almost like where you approve meeting dates or something like a schedule, you could, you know, have the clerk put together a calendar of standard, or not standard, but annual proclamations. And you could have it as an agenda item and approve it at some point, whether it be each fiscal year, each January. And then the clerk will knows, I've got this for this date, I've got this. And then you all have seen that ahead of time and know that these meetings, we've got two proclamations for your own add-ons down the road. It's just a thought.
Yeah. That's good. And that, that, that works too.
Well, and I, and I think maybe, sorry to interrupt, but I think that if, if it's a proclamation that's not on the calendar, let's say, mid-year, you know, you get approached or I get approached or somebody and they want a proclamation, then I think that 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 maybe is something that gets put on, just so that everyone knows next month, kind of like what you were saying at the end, or somewhere in the agenda where we would say next month, you know, we have a resident request this kind of proclamation and is everyone okay with that kind of thing, but.
Well, all right. Go ahead, Commissioner Turk.
Nope. We're good. I just, I got everything I needed to say.
You know, this is just our first discussion on this. So if there's nothing else, is there anything else from my colleagues? Anything from staff? I just wanna thank all of you. I thought this was a productive discussion and, and it is only the beginning. And I look forward to, you know, building this local rules manual. It's good for us to have some guidelines. And you know what? This isn't just good for us, but at the time of an election, when there are new people coming on board, I don't want them to, to panic or to not know what to do, you know? Here, here's the instruction manual, these are your list of options, these are the procedures to go by and so forth. It's gonna be good for government and good for stability, long-term stability and transition. All right.
The planner in me is already going crazy with spreadsheets and I'm excited. But truly thank you because this, these are outstanding questions. We were given direction by the previous commission, so I'm really happy to have clear direction from you all. And we'll bring, bring it back to you. Thank you.
Excellent. I did promise that we would do public comments on this. So if you'd like to speak in any of the items that we've just discussed and local rules and procedures for commission meeting, the floor is now open and as always, three minutes per person. And again, this is not the final decision. This is not final this evening. This is only the beginning, as we flesh out ideas. All right, you may begin when you're ready, sir.
All right. Thank you. Stephen B. Grant, P O Box four two four, Boynton Beach, Florida. First off, congratulations, City Manager Duggar. This is a long journey and I'm looking forward to the, this upcoming year. As for the, the current aspect of comment cards, it is something that makes your life easier because you already know who wants to speak. There's no line needed because you can announce people who want to speak. Therefore, it makes things easier, having things already planned in advance. As for the virtual platform, it is, I think, imperative in this twenty-first century. The fact that we've done this for over two years now, try to take it away from people is kind of restricting that First Amendment right, freedom to petition the government because not everyone can get here. So that's where I feel that checking the other cities to see if go-to webinar or Zoom might be the best is, I think, a better determination. Because the difficulty with go-to webinars, there's only six video feeds. Where Zoom, you can have multiple video feeds to help alleviate that issue. Because there was plenty of times where people had the option for a video feed that chose not to. And I thank you, Commissioner Turk, for being there so that we can see you, even though we can't see you here. And the last regarding proclamations, it's something where, you know, as the, the former mayor, I felt whatever we can do to have positive aspects show light of things that are happening in our community, it is beneficial. I did encourage a couple of times that the, my fellow city commission, that if they wanna do a proclamation as their elected position, that they have the ability to do that because it's you signing your own name. It's not necessarily something that needs to be approved by other people, other commissioners. And the last is that when there is an issue, whether it should be a proclamation or I did citations. So I never proclaimed a certain day for a person. I felt that it was more of proclaiming things for ideas and at different events and recognizing different organizations. Whereas citations would be used for people. Because if someone's turning a hundred years old, I've done multiple citations on that. And so that's where, if you're, you know, you need to speak onto that sort of seal of the city with a citation, what is that difference than a proclamation? And I think that's it. I think you guys are doing a great job. Congratulations on passing your first budget. And look forward to this upcoming two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three year.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium.
Cindy Falco de Carrado. In regards to the cards, I used to go downtown to the county a lot for their meetings. The problem with the cards is sometimes people can't get there on time before you have your spokesperson come and gather the cards. And another, other things is people didn't know what they wanted to talk about. They didn't get the agenda ahead of time. So once they come and they read the agenda, then they wanna speak. So it, it, it's, it's a double switch blade for the people. Because again, I know that we had people that wanted to come speak on things. Some of us had to put and fill out the card so they could get there in time, so they could speak. It, it creates controversy and it does, like I said, we don't have a large amount of people. And when we do, I think you handle it very well when you see everybody lined up. You know who's one is going to speak, you know that they're there. Someone's listening to somebody else communicating and all of a sudden they get a thought, then they wanna speak. They might not have known that until they heard somebody else say something. And they're gonna miss their opportunity because they didn't fill out a card. I just wanted to bring that to the platform. And I just do have a question, why, why do we have proclamations? I mean, I think we should all be proclamated. We're all special. God bless, that's all.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Susan Oyer. So yay, Cindy, we get to agree tonight on a whole lot of things. Yeah. And I am in DAR, so I will say thank you for, you know, doing something about Constitution Week. First of all, I hope you guys are officially calling this guidelines and not rules on the title of this. Second, I, I think, remember, you're employed by us. And we should, we, we, the public should be allowed to speak at every possible opportunity, whether you wanna hear, you know, earnest or not, he does have that right. And, you know, I wanna speak on everything, because I'll tell you now, if you put those stupid speaker cards in, I am going to ask to speak on every issue that I would have never spoken on before, just to speak on every issue because I have that right. And you're forcing me to do one of those stupid cards. And that just irks me to no end. That, as Cindy pointed out, people hear each other talk, they learn and hear what's going on, and then they go, wow, I have a question, I have an idea. They should be allowed to speak. Comment cards are stupid, wrong for all the reasons that Cindy brought up, including people not being able to get here on time after work to fill out a stupid card. You know, I'm sorry, that's just, that, that's my thing that's making my head explode tonight. Let's see, what else did I have on here on my list? Agenda items after publishing, I think you should have to show just cause. Why specifically does that need to be added on? I mean, it's one thing if it's an emergency that came up, yes, I think none of us have a problem with that. But adding stuff just to add stuff, because you just got this idea in your head? No, because the public needs to have time to see it, think about it, discuss it. You are here for the public, the public's not here for you. Let's see, proclamations, I think we should take all these pre-existing ones that have been going on for years and years and years, put them on the calendar and don't bring them up again. This is an obscene waste of time. Only do new proclamations and, and Mayor, you want to let people speak for no more than ten minutes? No, five minutes. Cut it down. The same with, you know, any, any of this other stuff you're doing, it, it's gotta be five minutes or less. Proclamations should only be new things. They should not be the pre-existing things that have gone on every single year since, you know, the dawn of us doing proclamations here in the city of Boynton Beach. So those are my opinions, and that would be a great way to cut the meeting down. And Andrew's smiling because he'd be able to get home before midnight. And thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker. My name is Barbara Reedy. I'm not in favor of the card system either. Just as a, a little nugget of a lesson that I learned. I did ten years as a PTA president. My very first PTA meeting at Forest Park Elementary School, I had a rowdy parent. And at the conclusion of the meeting, I was speaking with the principal, Mrs. Leslie, about what can we do to control that person? And she, she taught me a very valuable lesson. She said, Barb, you're never gonna be able to control what comes out of somebody else's mouth. And that little nugget of information served me well. The card system might sound like a good idea, but it kind of smacks of a control system. You know, Susan and even Cindy, I agreed with Cindy tonight. The, somebody in front of you that's speaking might say something intelligent that changes what you were going to stand up to say. Okay, so I would not be able to put on a card what I was going to say about any particular subject or even just free, free balling it. Okay? So no, I do not support this, the card system. It seems to work out pretty good, having people email in their comments. You know, Jim was able to read emails tonight without a problem. If people want to email in their cost comments, that's fine, hunky-dory, you know, whatever floats your boat. But, no, I'm with Susan. I would rebel.
All right. Any other public comment speakers? Before you begin, I just heard two items here about public comment cards. And I wanna ask staff a question, just for clarity. This is, the public comment cards is in addition to allowing people to come and speak to the podium in person or in replacement of?
So anybody that would come to the, the ideas and.
Because I interpreted it as in addition to, so people have an option.
Yeah, for the in-person audience would be, they fill it out because they wanna speak. And then you would call them up to speak when, like, in the order that you were, that they're received. So that's, it's just a way to have them, like, their names so that you can call them up to speak. They don't have to.
But they still speak.
Correct. They would still speak, yes.
Okay.
They just fill out that, like, on the, so the way it's outlined here in the document, is that the first section is, for public comments, is on agenda items. So they would tell you what agenda item they wanna speak to. They would fill that out on the card, but they don't have to say what they're gonna say on the card. They can come speak. And then on the, the public audience, which is at the end, which is on general topics under the purview of the commission, but that are not on the agenda, it's, they don't have, they can just say that they wanna speak. They literally just have to write their name on the card and give it to you for that section.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Catherine, because in no way, shape or form do I want this to replace people's ability to speak as they normally would. If people wanna just approach the podium and speak normally as they've been doing, absolutely, keep doing that. But there are some people who don't feel comfortable doing that, or they can't speak, you know, maybe they're sick, whatever the case may be. It's an added option, not a replacement of.
Correct.
That's the way I interpreted what you wrote.
It also would allow if somebody wants to write what they want to say, but they don't wanna read it themselves.
Right. We've had some people.
Read that into the record, even if they're presently here, you could still read it into the record on their behalf.
Excellent. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor, can, can I just clarify this, just my, with the cards too, is there is a, there is a cutoff time, so as written here. So if you want, don't wanna have a cutoff time, that's a comment that we can, you know, change. If that's, but, but like you said, if people wanna get up and speak.
They should be allowed to do that, as they normally have been.
And I've seen, I've seen live action comment cards been come up, you know, in other places, if that's what you want, if you wanna use comment cards. If you don't wanna use comment cards, you just want people to, to get up and speak at those two areas. You can do that too, you know? But as written, you would be required to fill out a card, get it to whoever the person is, the clerk, whoever's collecting them, prior to the start of public comments. And then those cards would be given to you as the mayor to call those people up to speak. And if someone came in later, that would be too late.
Right.
And so that, so if that's not what you want, then we go back and rewrite it.
That, that is not what I want. I wanna hear from my colleagues. My understanding was, you can still do what you've been doing this whole time. It's just an additional option if you didn't wanna speak, but you still want it to be heard. That is what I understood it to be. It doesn't force anyone to do it.
Okay, but then.
But that's just me. I wanna hear from my colleagues. That was.
I'm somewhat confused now.
Okay. Well, we're, we're, we're developing the policy, so it's not set in stone.
Okay, my, my understanding was that if, if you did not submit a card, you, you were not going to speak. You couldn't speak. You have to have a card in to speak.
Right. That's how it's proposed.
That's why, that's how I read it.
Correct. No, you're correct, Commissioner.
But I, I can see what you're saying, because I don't wanna suppress anybody. We wanna make it easier. And that's, that's why I ask, what is the purpose of this? Okay? And we wanna make it easier for people. If you wanna make it easier for people, then don't suppress them of speaking. If, if, if they get an idea from the speaker, we have Sandra of, of here now. If she says something that triggers a good idea in somebody else's head, maybe we need to hear that.
I agree with you, you know? I agree with you. I wanna add options for people, not take it away. Let's continue with public comments. Thank you so much for being patient. Begin when you're ready.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Watson, I'm three, four, eight, Boynton Bay Circle. I was totally confused too, after all of this comment. I was thinking the same thing that the mayor was thinking, that this was gonna be in addition to people speaking. I don't think it's right that you ask the public to basically register in order to speak. And in case there is someone late, then they're not gonna be allowed to speak because they didn't register? No, I, I, the, the point is, is that we, the people of Boynton Beach, we come here because we want to hear what you have to say and we want you to hear what we have to say. And if you want this place to look a lot better than what it's looking now, then we're going to have to allow the public to be more active in these meetings. One of the things I have a problem with is like, when you guys do your business and then we come in and we either speak before you do your business, well, I don't need to speak before you do your business, because I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know what, you know, I, I haven't heard you go back and forth and discuss things. After you discuss things, then I think the public should be able to say, well, you know what? Whatever, whatever they feel. I believe that the city of Boynton is the greatest city ever, because I live here. All right? And I think that we can do a lot of different things and more things and better things for the city. But we have to, the commission, and you have to take in consideration the people. And the people have to take in consideration of you. So if we can work together, but don't limit your people from speaking. I know they go on really long, that's why I have to rush to eat before I get here, right? So I know, and, and they do, they go on really long and we might have to time it. Some things we have to time, but at least just hear from the people. Don't cut, don't cut the people off, just let's figure out how we can limit the time. And like a lot of this discussions that goes back and forth with you guys, that takes up a lot of time. Maybe we could come up with limiting some of that as well? Okay? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Woodworth. I live in Boynton Beach. I think you preempted me here. The, the card.
The, the card thing, if it's in addition to speaking, it's just ridiculous. What problem does that solve? It's a control mechanism. It limits people's ability to speak, and it's just ridiculous. And hopefully, that's what you were trying to clarify. I'll give you my own example. I come to most of these meetings, I've come to a lot of these over the last 30 years. Sometimes what I get up to speak doesn't, what I end up saying, because three people ahead of me have already said that, and another 30 are ready to say it, and you got lots of stuff that you could fill in with other things that adds more value. So you regroup, you dynamically regroup as you're working your way up. So I don't know what I even put on the card. Sometimes a topic that looks harmless on the agenda ends up being something entirely different. Went to a meeting one night, they were trying to change term limits, because somebody added something to agenda very quietly. Term limits in this city of Boynton, where we've made that point very clear, we're sneakily going through the agenda at a meeting that wasn't anywhere to be seen, except we happened to be there. So yeah, we talked about something different that night. And the proclamations, I love a good proclamation. You had some good ones tonight, but some of those things are a god-awful waste of time. Uh, if you're not going to stop doing them altogether, at least think about what they are, and put some time limits on it. And make the people feel good, maybe we can do them at their meetings, where they'd have more people there to see it, instead of the five that came for the picture. I mean, I'm not casting disrespect, but we do a lot of proclamations, folks. I'm not sure all of them really need doing, not everything that needs to be done does. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other in-person public comment speakers on this item? Uh, seeing none, we're going to go online. I'm money, any hands up that want to speak on this item?
We have two hands raised. Our first speaker is Christie Ward. Christie, you're been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, hi, I'm Chrissy Ward. Um, I was there earlier. So I'm doing like a dual thing here, uh, where sometimes I'm able to come to the meeting and also be at home. So the thing is, um, that the timeframe for me is kind of difficult right now, now that it's on Thursday. So here's the thing, um, I'm kind of, I was kind of confused, uh, with these cards. I didn't think that the cards were really being, like, talked about concerning those who were in person, or more so for the people who are online, because what was being said was, like, basically, um, people, because you didn't really know who, if the person is, like, uh, pretending to be someone else, that basically, you know, anybody could be anybody on, online. So you kind of was, like, maybe the cards should be for the people online, uh, more so than people in person. I don't think cards are, like, really, um, should be put in a place at any point, because people's emotions and their passions have to be set throughout. And typing it up just doesn't do it the justice as someone's speaking it out from their heart. So the thing is, is like, you know, if you want to do the cards, then do the cards. But I still think that people should be able to voice their opinions, and just like many said before, I mean, like, you have your mindset to say one thing, but somebody else just said something else that triggers other things that, you, you know, three minutes is really not a long time, especially when you start that clock. That clock seems to go by, three minutes seems like two seconds. So, you know, at the end of the day, what we need to say, um, should not be, like, uh, cut back on online or in person. We should be able to speak, you should allow the constituents to speak, because some of us just aren't able to be there, and some of us just aren't able to stay there all night long. So, you know, I think, um, this is really going to have to be, like, really talked about a little bit more, or just throw the cards out. Those who can email, email, or send in the cards, but don't take the voice away. You know, you, you need, the people need to be heard, and that's all I have to say. Have a good evening.
Thank you. My name, next speaker.
Okay, our next and final speaker is Corlin McQuire. Corlin, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Court McQuire, 506 Whispering Pines. Uh, thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll make it quick. I agree with just about the sentiment with everyone there. More features, uh, options and protocols will probably lead to more confusion and lengthy meetings where you have to pack in the good stuff at the end, and it gets late. So I think the cards are, on face value, sound like a good idea, but will likely not work out for the best. And I also wanted to congratulate the new city manager, uh, Mr. Duggar, and, uh, thank you for your time. Good night.
Good night, thank you. And just to confirm, money, that was the last one?
Yes, sir.
All right, public comments are now closed. Is there anything else from my colleagues? Any closing comments for the evening's meeting?
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner, hey, go ahead.
Oh, I, I guess my closing statement, that we should still look at it, as we stated early, and bring back some options, but I'm, I'm leaning toward just eliminating those cards, because it, it causes more, uh, problem than it solves. So, uh, that's where I'm leaning now, but I would like to hear back from, from staff.
All right, Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yeah, um, I want to commend staff and whoever came up with this idea. I don't want to, you know, step on your idea. But I just think that we need to make life simple and easy, and not complicated, and having these cards, and having these online comments. And it, it just creates unnecessary confusion that we don't need. It's not going to make the meetings faster. It's only going to make things worse in the short term, and potentially in the long term. It's going to make residents not even want to come to the meetings anymore, in my opinion. So I think we should keep it simple, make it easy, and that's it.
All right, Commissioner Kelly?
I, uh, share some of the sentiments of my colleagues. My only hesitation with regard to the speaker cards, and some of the positives that come out of it, are the follow-ups. One of the biggest problems that we have is the follow-up with people who have spoken. Sometimes they speak, they have questions, and then they can't stay for the rest of the meeting, and they leave, and there's no follow-up. And so one of the positive things about these speaker cards is it gives you the opportunity to say, yes, I would like follow-up, and here's my phone number, and here's my email address, and I don't have to stay until 11 o'clock for a staff member to come up and find me, and give me the answer to my question that could have been answered the next day, or the next day. So I, and I understand, I don't want to not allow people to speak and give them the opportunity, because it's very important. That's why we have, you know, and that's why we're here. So it's to listen to the residents. But I think that there's, there may be a, a way that we can utilize them to our benefit as a city and as city staff, um, that, I don't know if it's, if it's the optional nature of it, so that, you know, somebody who doesn't want to speak, but wants their, wants their opinion on the record, or they want to follow up, or, you know, they don't want to spend three minutes talking about it, but here's my issue. So I don't, I don't want to totally nix it, but I think, because I think there's a lot of positives that can come out of it, that would benefit city staff, it would benefit the residents. So that's kind of my thought on it. I don't want to completely nix it, um, but I understand the point of, um, being able to, you know, not have that set time, um, where they have to be here on time to fill out a card, to hand it to somebody, and that's the only way that they're going to be allowed to speak, and I don't, I don't like that aspect of it. But I know the, the, in the places that they use it, which is just, uh, many places use it, including, you know, State House and Senate, that it's for, for, it's for, to also keep the meetings moving. So there's some benefit to it too, but, um, I understand everyone else's concerns. But those are kind of my thoughts. I like the idea of the, of the follow-up and...
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner. I didn't even think about the follow-up, you know? That is an advantage. You know, my position on this is, if it's an option, people who want to do it, great. They want to provide more information for follow-up, that's great. But if people don't want to do it, excuse me, but if people don't want to do it, they don't have to. Just keep doing what you've normally been doing. Just come and speak as you normally would, hear from other people that have spoken, and just as you go. But, you know, for example, if somebody came, they really wanted to say something, but they got to leave early, you know, they should have an option, right? More power to them. So, you know, that, that's my thought process. But anyways, we've concluded this meeting, and thank you, everybody. Commissioner, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Turkin.
I love conversation, I love dialogue, um, especially, you know, especially on our meeting. I think, yes, these cards would make things easier. I, you know, that would make life easier, I heard that earlier, but I don't, I didn't get into public service for my life to be easier. Frankly, my life's, you know, been harder, you know? And, uh, that's a sacrifice you make when you step into public service, or any type of service, for that matter. And so I think we should continue public comment as it is. I think Commissioner Kelly made a great point about the follow-up card. So we should have a follow-up card for people who need follow-up. Prime example, Ms. Ward, with, um, the speed bumps, you know? Hey, if you want to follow up, here's a follow-up card, fill this out, staff is going to get with you. And so that way, we, we nail, you can get better at the follow-up aspect of that. And again, I, I think virtual option is important. I think things are going well, it's going to cause a lot of confusion. And, you know, we're, we're here for the people, we work for them, they elected us, we need to do their bidding. And I just want to say, um, you know, we talked about the proclamations earlier. I, I do want staff to look into, and I haven't seen this calendar, so, uh, November, please, Veterans and Patriots Month.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. They have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So much to adjourn.
That's pretty fast. Uh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.